...for the children, the beauty of the children, our leaders. And we greet you with love and with kindness and thank you for being here. And to that young man in his suit, I walked by and he said, "I met you at the Sens game. I remember you." So, thank you. Thank you, young man. I'm very honoured to be asked by his worship, Mayor Jim Watson, council members in the city of Ottawa, to be here, to greet you, and to give a blessing for your first council meeting. So I say, "Chiemigwech", for the respect and the kindness that you have for the Algonquin people. Chiemigwech, thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, for being here on the ancestral Algonquin territory.
...and stand before my ancestors to bring words of greeting, to welcome each and every one of you beautiful people, brothers and sisters, to this unceded, unsurrounded homeland of the Algonquin people. The homeland that has been here since time immemorial and the homeland that has been entrusted onto us by our Creator and our ancestors and the homeland that we must ensure will be here forevermore for our children today and tomorrow. So, Chiemigwech, thank you for being here. I ask at this time that we humble ourselves before the Great One, the Creator, and that we give our words of prayer in the way that we have been taught, the way that we have been instructed, the way that we believe. And let us hold our prayers together as one in respect and kindness and love for one another. And I humble myself before my ancestors and the Creator. Creator, we come before you with that one mind, one heart, and one spirit and one voice to lift our prayers to you, Creator, and give you thanks for the beauty of life and bringing us all together. And Creator, together we give honour and thanks to the first ancestors of this land and I honour everyone's ancestors as well. And Creator, my prayer for all who are here, for the leaders, for the citizens, to give them strength, Creator. Loan them your wisdom. Guide us, Creator, in these discussions today. And Creator, my prayer for all who are here, to help them, to bless them. Bless them with that good life. Bless them with that love. Bless them, Creator, with strength. And we know, Creator, that responsibilities are given to leaders and we, the people, we must pray for our leaders. We must help our leaders. And we know the responsibilities that our leaders have for the people is to show that respect. But together, together, pis endam, together we must listen and together mama we, niba kau. And together we must show that wisdom. Mama we. We must show together the respect that we have for one another. And we thank you, Creator. We thank you for hearing our prayer. Kinewin, emiawin. And we thank you for this blessing that you bring into this meeting here today. And let us, with that one heart, one spirit, and one mind, show kindness, love for one another. Chiemigwech, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Watson.
Thank you very, very much, Elder Commander, for your kind words and your presence here today. I now ask you to remain standing as Counselor Blay introduces some very special guests from Cumberland Ward. We're going to sing our national anthem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Mrs. Gabriella and her students from out Notre Place, located in my ward. And there may be another little Mr. Blay in this group. We will hear them sing the national anthem because they are our future heroes, doctors, engineers of tomorrow that will make Canada a better place to live. And even if they don't aspire to become a politician, they enjoy the services we provide to the residents. Even if they're only 10 or 11 years old, they want to see poverty reduction. They enjoy parks and recreation facilities. They go to our libraries. They took a class, a civic class, in the fifth grade. They came here by bus this morning. They know people work hard to improve the services they enjoy. So without any further ado, the Little Singers.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True and noble in all your strength. Can't on pass a fort and a pier, it's a port and a quad. Ton histoire est une époque pire. Peu plus brillant ses soirs. God, he comble, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand our guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand our guard for thee.
Well, what a great rendition of our national anthem. Merci beaucoup. And I don't know if you caught that. Counselor Blay pointed out there's another Steve, Stephen Blay. Stephen Blay. Stephen Blay gave a shout out here, waved in that nice tie. That's Counselor Blay's son. So thank you, Stephen Blay Jr., for being here, as well as all of your great friends. And I have to say, it's the best dressed group of singers we've ever had at City Hall. So congratulations and another round of applause for these wonderful young people. Merci beaucoup. I am pleased to announce that the Mayor's City Builder Award is presented today to Big Brothers and Big Sisters Ottawa. It's my pleasure to invite Executive Director Susan Ingram to come forward and also ask Counselor Keith Eggly to join us for the presentation. And we've got, I want to point out and welcome Senator Vern White. Thank you, Senator, for being with us. He was an advisor, a volunteer advisor with the Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And the most popular person in the room, Henry Burris and Nicole are here with us today. And I've now gone down that slippery slope. I'm going to have to mention Stefan Keyes over there and a few others. But thank you all, Michael, for being here with us today. And I want to welcome the group of what are known as Biggs, the volunteer mentors, and the Littles, who are the mentees, parents, staff, community partners, and supporters who are joining us here today. You had a little breakfast reception earlier to celebrate the 50th anniversary. And we thank you for being with us as we recognize the wonderful work Big Brothers and Big Sisters does. Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Ottawa, as I mentioned, is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year. That's 50 years of helping young people reach their full potential.
Big Sisters and Big Brothers of Ottawa is the main organization that accompanies children and youth through gratifying experiences and thanks to programs that are enriching for all concerned.
People who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place through volunteerism or exemplary action. I want to take this opportunity to thank the many people in the community who have volunteered and supported the incredible work of the organization over the past five decades. I also, in particular, want to thank board members, Timon Ledain, Paul Willetts, Mitchell Karkner, Michael Colette, Jessica Ripley, and Michael Kakish, as well as Tara Shannon, one of the ambassadors. With more than 1,000 volunteers, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Ottawa facilitates and supports one-to-one and group mentoring relationship with children in need of a special friend. They serve over 1,100 children and youth annually with safe, quality programs that help children to hope and dream and realize their true potential. The organization brings people together and enriches the lives of everyone involved. And I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate board members past and present, Biggs and Littles, past and present, and parents who have come out today to support you on the 50th anniversary.
So I'd like to thank the organization for its many contributions to the community.
At the Mayor's City Builder Award with your ward councillor, Counselor Keith Eggly, to Susan Ingram. And I'd ask the ambassadors and the board members if they would come forward as well. So all the ambassadors and board members. I'm just improvising now. I didn't tell them they're going to do this. But I think they deserve a big round of applause. There we go. Come on in here, folks. Step back.
How sweet, though.
Mayor Watson. Mayor Watson, the font on your speech is as big as mine. So, yeah. So, good morning, everyone. My name's Susan Ingram. I'm the proud executive director of Big Brothers, Big Sisters Ottawa. And I'd like to express how honoured and thrilled I am to receive such a distinguished award on behalf of Big Brothers, Big Sisters Ottawa to mark our 50th year milestone. Thank you very much, Mayor Watson and Counselor Eggly and to all of you city councillors from all of us at Big Brothers, Big Sisters Ottawa for this honour and the city's support over the last 50 years. It's amazing for us to celebrate this milestone and to remember that actually in 1970, we began with just 10 volunteer mentors in the Big Brother program. And here we are 50 years later, as the mayor mentioned, serving up to 1,000 young girls and boys annually through four different programs and it's across every ward in the city. Our ability to provide long-lasting relationships to thousands of young people in Ottawa has been enabled through the support of the city and its caring community. And no matter where I go when I mention Big Brothers, Big Sisters, inevitably somebody or someone shares a story about who and how they connect to us. They'll tell me about how they used to have a big sister and still see them and talk to them regularly 20 years later. Or they'll tell me that their father was a big brother and that his little brother used to come to family dinners and they spent time with them throughout their lifetime. They share how much it meant to them and how it impacted their lives. So, we shout it out from the rooftops after 50 years in Ottawa and 105 years in Canada. Mentoring matters, youth matter. Taking two hours out of your week to listen and guide them will help to shape them. It'll help to shape you and ultimately your community. Thank you to each of you here today, our amazing ambassadors, our volunteer mentors who started off as strangers wanting to share their time with a young person to becoming a lifelong friend. We share this award with all of you. And thank you to our donors, our alumni, our staff, and our volunteer board members. Our hope and our goal is to continue to ignite a spark in young people in Ottawa and across the country, helping them to realize their power and potential. They are our future and why we look forward to another 50 years with your help. We are bigger together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you know, today is Bell Let's Talk Day. And I'll ask our colleague and friend, Counselor Hubley, to offer some comments from a personal perspective and thank all members of council for their signs and the hashtag to raise more money to battle mental illness. Counselor Hubley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity. And good morning, colleagues. Mental health awareness has been a cause close to my heart for many years now. And while many advances have been made, there's still much more we need to do. Bell Canada is helping today by donating $0.05 to Canadian mental health programs for every call, text, tweet, and Facebook post made. There are also filters on Instagram and Snapchat as well. So please use the hashtag BellLet'sTalkToday as often as you can. Thank you to Bell for your corporate leadership and the lives you are saving through these efforts. I want to take this opportunity to give a sincere thanks to each of you who have reached out to me with words of kindness and support while we work hard to resolve the latest issues besetting our transit commission. Words matter. Please remember to be kind, respectful, and accepting of each other, not just today, but every day. When it comes to mental health, every action counts and I will be doing everything I can to help ensure the help is there when our young people need somebody who cares. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me a moment to thank our citizens for their kindness.
Thank you very much, councillor. We have another special guest, two guests. Counselor Gower's parents are with us. If they could give us a wave. Mr. and Mrs. Gower, welcome. Glad you want to say anything?
Well, I know they often watch our council meetings on Rogers TV and I'm really happy they were able to come here today. So, welcome.
Great. Thank you. Roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Counselor Luff. Counselor Dudas. Counselor Harder.
Here.
Counselor Sess.
Here.
Counselor El Shantiri. Counselor Gower.
Isi.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Counselor Shirelli. Counselor Eggly.
Here.
Counselor Deans. Counselor Tierney. Counselor Flory.
Isi.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor McKennie.
Present.
Counselor Leeper.
Isi.
Counselor Brockington.
Here.
Counselor Menard.
Present.
Counselor Clucci.
Present.
Counselor Blay.
Isi.
Counselor DeRusse.
Here.
Counselor Mophett.
Here.
Counselor Mihan.
Here.
Counselor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
See.
You have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Let's see. I want to begin by thanking Elder Claudette Commander, the youngest elder I've ever met, for being here today to offer that wonderful Algonquin prayer and blessing. We must always be mindful and recognize that we are on the sacred land of Claudette's people, the Algonquin and Anishinaabe nation who have been the stewards of this region for over 6,000 years. I hope that her words, inspired by traditions and teachings passed down from millennia, will help guide council's deliberations and inspire us to make decisions that will benefit our communities for centuries to come. Merci beaucoup, Claudette. Inviting our indigenous friends and partners to share their culture and language at these important events is vital to the reconciliation efforts that our city and our entire country have committed to bring justice and equality to this relationship. I very much value our relationship with our surrounding Algonquin communities, Pickwacknagon and Kittyganzipi, as well as all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit residents of Ottawa. Last year, for instance, we announced with Pickwacknagon and Ottawa Tourism that our region would have the honour of hosting the 2021 Ontario Indigenous Summer Games as well as the 2021 and 2023 Masters Indigenous Games. Registration for the 2021 Masters Indigenous Games will open next week and we're very excited to welcome thousands of participants who will join us in Ottawa to celebrate their wonderful culture through sport.
We're anxious to celebrate the Aboriginal culture with thousands of participants that will come to Ottawa for these events.
Are a great boost to Ottawa's economy and help sustain good jobs in the tourism sector. That's why we're hard at work with Michael Crockett, who is here today, and his team at Ottawa Tourism to strengthen the industry and approximately 40,000 jobs it supports in our hotels, restaurants, and small businesses across the city. And we're keeping the momentum with many great sporting events coming to our city this year and next. The 2020 Men's and Women's Youth Sports Basketball Championships at TD Place in March. The 2020 Pan-American Olympic Qualifying Wrestling Tournament at the Shaw Center, where Stittsville's own Erika Wee will be competing for her place in the Tokyo 2020 Olympics. And the 2021 Canada Soccer Under-15 National Championships in March of next year. And since we delivered Ottawa 2017 with our tourism partners, the industry has continued to grow, seeing once again a solid increase of 4.3% in hotel room nights last year with visitors coming from 179 countries. Confidence in our tourism industry continues to grow with $25 million in improvements taking shape at the Ottawa International Airport in addition to the new Alt Hotel and an LRT station that will both have direct access to the terminal. And over the last two years, we've also seen more than 1,300 hotel rooms added across the city in order to meet the growing demand from visitors from around the world. This enthusiasm is fueled by players in our tourism industry which are constantly innovating to ensure Ottawa remains an appealing destination to the world. In December, we learned that our region was going to be home to the first interprovincial zip line in the world. Little zip Rogers Azibi, et de grand picotop l'industrie de tourisme de la région de la capitale nationale. The zip line will soar 120 feet above the Ottawa River and offer incredible views of the region, including the Parliament Buildings, the Supreme Court, and Chudger Falls in the Museum of History. This photo of former London Mayor Boris Johnson shows why I will nominate Gatno Mayor Maxime Penjojovan to test the system first. He got stuck there. And I see this project as a thriving symbol of the special connection that exists between our two cities. Now, for the first time ever, Ottawa will host the culminating event of a great nationwide tradition, the Canadian Culinary Championships, which will take place at the Shaw Center this weekend. I know a lot of participants are looking forward to an incredible feast with some of the best chefs in the country. And in a few months, we'll also have a brand-new sports franchise to cheer on in the nation's capital when the Ottawa Blackhawks make their debut in the Canadian Elite Basketball League at the Arena at TD Place. But we also have a number of recurring events that are commemorating anniversaries and we should be enthusiastically celebrating their success. The Rito Canal Skateway, the longest skating rink in the world, is celebrating its 50th anniversary. Now, as you know, I can't really skate, but I can certainly appreciate that this longstanding tradition means for our community and for tourism in Ottawa. The Jazz Festival will celebrate its 40th edition and I look forward to the crowds who will once again return to Confederation Park for the occasion. And last but not least, our beloved Canadian Chulot Festival will help us mark a special anniversary this year as we celebrate the 75 years of friendship between Canada and the Kingdom of the Netherlands. And I'm pleased that Charles de Fer Frederic Kissel and Taylor Heaven are here from the Dutch Embassy today on behalf of the ambassador Hank van Venderswan. If those two representatives from the Netherlands Embassy could wave at us, thank you very much for being here. As you know, the friendship dates back to the Second World War when Canadian soldiers led the forces that liberated the Netherlands 75 years ago in 1945. And I'm proud that my father fought in those battles during the Second World War as a member of the 1st Battalion of the Royal Canadian Regiment of Canada. He fought alongside the brave young men who played a pivotal role in the northwestern Europe campaign. The Royal Regiment is credited with liberating the city of Hassan on April 13, 1945, before participating in the clearing of Groningen until April 15, some 20 days before the Netherlands was liberated from German occupation. For his efforts, my father, Bev Watson, who passed away a few years ago, was awarded the France and Germany Star, the Canadian Volunteer Service Medal in Class, and the 1939 to 1945 War Medal. I'm very proud of my dad's service to our nation and it was a special honour for me to visit the Netherlands last fall in the country where he served Canada and defended our freedom during the war. During our time there, I had the distinct pleasure of meeting her Royal Highness, Princess Marguerite, who was born, as many know, in the Ottawa Civic Hospital while the Dutch royal family were living here in exile. I took that opportunity to invite her to visit Ottawa to renew the special relationship between our two countries and attend a naming ceremony at the new Princess Marguerite Park near the Civic Hospital. And it's my pleasure to announce today that Princess Marguerite is indeed planning on joining us in Ottawa to mark this momentous occasion. But before we fast forward to 2020, let's talk, take this opportunity to look back on a challenging and eventful year that was 2019, during which we approved two budgets in one calendar year, launched the Confederation Line, moved ahead with Stage 2 of LRT, and once again overcame, rather, many challenges of the community. It was certainly a productive year at City Hall and our committees worked to deliver many ambitious initiatives and great service to our residents. Following the historic back-to-back flooding that hit our region in 2017 and again last year, the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee updated the flood plan mapping for the region, which will provide more certainty to residents and developers which will provide more certainty to residents and developers looking for guidance on where to build new homes in rural areas. The flooding once again lasted for many weeks, but this time, our city had to declare a state of emergency in order to bring some much-needed reinforcements from the Canadian Armed Forces. Ces inondations encore une fois affectées notre communauté pendant...
The flooding's once again tested us for many weeks.
15,000 residents who volunteered to fill and deploy 1.5 million sandbags to protect homes as well as critical infrastructure like the Britannia Water Treatment Plant. This emergency response, which was superbly coordinated and executed by our city staff and first responders, significantly limited the damage caused by these floods when compared to the 2017 events. And although more than 150 families had to evacuate their homes, our community came together once again to support our fellow residents in need. However, it takes years for these affected neighbourhoods to recover from such devastating weather events. Many residents of West Carlton, who were the victims of the devastating tornadoes in 2018, will only be returning home in the coming months. Encouraging signs of progress can be observed in this community with the new Dunrobin Plaza taking shape once again, this time with a stronger roof. And many are hoping that the Dunrobin Meat and Grocery, a family business owned by sisters Cindy and Julie Delahunt, will once again find a home there as a welcome sign that things are getting back to normal. Unfortunately, as we all know, these natural disasters seem to be getting all too common, and their effects are being felt right around the world. In the face of this, our Environment Committee has been working to tackle a worldwide climate challenge, adopting an important climate change master plan at its last meeting of 2019. I hope that, a plan that will be up for debate later today, and I hope we will all get behind it and support it. This roadmap for a more sustainable community contains ambitious targets that will hopefully see our city eliminate its corporate greenhouse gas emissions by 2040 and for our community to do so by 2050. Working with our partners, the plan will deliver numerous concrete actions to achieve these targets, including many energy efficiency projects as part of Energy Evolution, the development of a climate resiliency plan, and applying a climate lens to the new official plan. Now, despite these environmental challenges, I want to acknowledge the progress we have made over the last few years in reducing GHGs. According to the latest greenhouse gas inventory, our community's emissions decreased by 14% between 2012 and 2018, and the city's corporate emissions, which account for about 5% of Ottawa's total emissions, were reduced by an impressive 36% over that same period. And later this year, OC Transport will begin piloting electric buses as part of its fleet, and I'm hopeful that this will put us on a path to greening our entire fleet, especially as battery technology improves in the coming years. Je tiens à remercier le député fédéral et la m...
I'd want to thank Minister Catherine McKenna for her support on this initiative.
...to do to achieve our long-term targets, there are promising signs that our investments in new technologies and energy efficiency projects are in fact paying off. The Environment Committee also strengthened the Tree Protection Bylaw, which will put in place greater safeguards like compensation for removals and higher fines to help people protect precious tree canopy. I encourage all colleagues to support these strength in tree protection measures when they come to a vote later today. Now, one of the city's most important environmental initiatives can be completed later this year when we open, we start operating, rather, the combined sewage storage tunnel, part of the ORAP or Ottawa River Action Plan. This key project of ORAP will help us reduce approximately 80% of the discharge of waste growing into the Ottawa River, thereby increasing our residents' enjoyment and improving the quality of life for our wildlife in this great waterway. These are all important initiatives that will help improve our residents' quality of life for generations to come, and the city is delivering on many others that will have a similar lasting impact. Think of the new Ottawa Central Library and Library and Archives Canada Joint Facility, which has tremendous potential to become a people place like no other, both for residents and visitors. After some of the most enthusiastic community consultations in recent history, the OLP team and architects at Diamond Schmidt, excuse me, and... Do we have a bleeper for that? Diamond Schmidt and KWC architects unveiled the preliminary design work last week to much acclaim. I certainly look forward to us breaking ground on this amazing city-building project and witnessing its grand opening in 2024. The facility will no doubt become a stunning architectural addition to Ottawa's downtown and one that will kick-start the revitalization and rejuvenation of the type of development we want to see to take place at Le Breton Flats around the Pimise Station. To help steer our city's development, the Planning Committee and ARAK are in the midst of developing a new official plan, which will guide the growth of Ottawa over the next several decades. With its five big moves, the new OP will identify long-term trends, challenges, and opportunities facing Ottawa, and it will ensure that our city remains on track to be the most livable mid-sized city in North America. The new official plan will prioritize the climate change lens across the board, but will also facilitate economic activity thanks to special economic zone designations for Canada North, where business are bursting at the seams, and the Ottawa International Airport, which is surrounded by underutilized property. As our high-tech community in Canada continues to grow at an impressive rate, now is the time to introduce flexible policies that will foster the development of much-needed office space and attract the attention of investors worldwide. There's no better time to conduct this important official plan review, because, as you know, our city reached an important milestone last year when it surpassed the 1 million population mark. By crossing that threshold, Ottawa now finds itself in a new league when competing with cities around the globe, and we have to live up to the expectations of a world-class G7 capital city. For its part, the Transportation Committee has been tasked with finding mobility solutions to handle this growth, and this process is now underway following the launch of the Transportation Master Plan refresh in December of last year. It's important for us to work with all our mobility partners across the region as tens of thousands of residents across the Ottawa River every morning, cross the Ottawa River every morning and afternoon to get to and from work.
Et je suis fier de la bonne relation que...
I'm very, very proud of the relationship the mayor, Penojovan, I have developed in recent years. This relationship benefits several projects on both sides of the river and has led to increased collaboration between our transportation teams as well as between OC Transport and the STO. We are both opposed to the construction of a sixth bridge between Ottawa and Gatineau because we want the federal government to prioritize funding the light rail projects that we have, will have positive effects on the quality of the life of residents and on the environment for decades to come. We're working closely with each other to ensure that the board of directors of the NCC understands our position. Our teams are also working on plans to connect Gatineau's future light rail network from Western Gatineau with Ottawa in order to maximize the benefits of this system for users on both sides of the river. I look forward to seeing the results of their study sometime in the next few months when they make a presentation to the Transportation Committee.
Projects have the potential to change not only the way, how we get around, but also how we develop our city. And the launch of the Confederation Line in September was certainly a defining moment in our city's history, since this critical investment in public transit will help us manage our gross population for decades to come. And although the LRT has faced some significant challenges because of its, or since its launch four months ago, I'm confident that these will find permanent solutions to these issues. Yesterday afternoon, I had the opportunity to visit the Belfast Yard MSF with the Chair and Vice Chair of our Transit Commission to meet with the team at JBA who arrived from Britain a few years, a few days ago. It was helpful to get an understanding of their focus over the coming days and week as they assist RTM to increase the number of available trains, as well as to help find permanent solutions to improve the reliability of LRT and the experience of our customers. I wish to thank our transit users for their patience as we work through this. You rightfully expect and deserve a level, a higher level of service from our transit network.
Et je suis confiant que nous commencerons à trouver des... And I'm very confident that we'll start to find solutions to these issues in the coming weeks.
...for our city. In a recent Globe and Mail article entitled "Ottawa is poised to grow and meet new workforce demand", end quote, Adam Stanley highlights the enthusiasm that LRT has created given its long-term economic potential. While describing it as the most impactful piece of transportation infrastructure since the construction of the Rideau Canal nearly 200 years ago, he goes on to say, and I quote, "As a result of recent investments in LRT and other new infrastructure, Ottawa seems poised at last to step out of the long shadows cast by Toronto and Montreal", end quote. These are encouraging words for our city, and I'm proud that we're continuing that progress. As you have all seen, our crews have been hard at work on the construction of Stage 2 extensions to bring light rail farther east, west, and south. The construction of Stage 2 LRT will add 44 kilometers of new rail and 24 new stations to our city's O train network. And we won't stop there, having already laid the groundwork to keep extending the system to Canada Stittsville and Barhaven as part of Stage 3. LRT is also inspiring confidence amongst investors in creating economic opportunities right across the city. Our local economy is in fact firing on all cylinders, posting significant job gains in 2019 as the unemployment rate hovered between 4.2 and 4.4% for most of last year. I'm proud, as mayor of Ottawa, of this city, to say that 50,000 new jobs were created in Ottawa in 2019, spread across all sectors from construction to media and culture and healthcare to high-tech and tourism. This represents an annual job increase of 8.5%, ranking second among Canada's 33 large cities, which is quite impressive.
Ces chiffres sont très impressionnants. These figures are, inspire a lot of confidence. Alors, les chiffres sont impressionnants. Ces chiffres montrent également l'incidence des nombreux projets de développement économique qui se réalisent dans plusieurs secteurs de la ville. La semaine prochaine, le CARR examinera les plans d'expansion de 320 millions de dollars du Hard Rock pour le champ de course Rideau Carlton. Si il est approuvé, ce projet entraînera la construction d'un nouvel hôtel de huit étages comportant 178 chambres, un théâtre de 1,600 places et jambes. Unepian, un certain nombre de projets passionnants se concrétisent à la ferme de recherche de la CS.
Working with Invest Ottawa, we launched the Ottawa L5 Testing Facility, which is helping our local partners grow and lead worldwide in the ever-growing autonomous vehicle industry. The site is now the first and largest AV testing facility of its kind in North America, serving as a test track, research facility, and data center where we can test a number of new products and technologies. We now have many partners that are benefiting from this initiative, including Smartcone, BlackBerry QNX, Autonomous Stuff, Arigo, and Carlton University, who are actively testing and conducting leading-edge research at this facility across from the Nepian Sportsplex. This complements our AV test track in Canada North, which has, for a few years, enabled the testing of vehicles that communicate in real-time with live city infrastructure. And as a result of L5, Indro Robotics, Autonomous Stuff, and Arigo, Britain's leading AV company, are all opening offices in Ottawa, which speaks to the economic benefits of this strategic investment. In a recent article defining what should be our business community's long-term aspirations, journalist and entrepreneur Mark Sutcliffe described our driverless test track as a shining example of what defines our city as a place of innovation. We've also been working with the Ottawa Film Office and Tribe Rose Studios on a film studio project for this site, one that would create approximately 500 new jobs during construction and hundreds of other full-time jobs in film, television, and animation just down the street from Algonquin College. Just a few days ago, we had a production using the Rink of Dreams in Confederation Park to film a winter scene, and we can all be sure that Ottawa will once again be showcased on the Lifetime Channel next December. Now, following a thorough review of the business case for the project, staff will be bringing forward to Fedco in March a proposal for the loan financing of this facility, one that will benefit taxpayers and the film office while growing this important cultural sector and creating good jobs in the city of Ottawa. And another opportunity is percolating on the site with possible creation of a world-class smart farm. This facility, located a stone's throw away from the farming industry regulators, would bring together academic and private sector partners to advance precision agriculture and tackle the food insecurity challenges faced by our planet. This precision agricultural innovation will eventually benefit the 1,045 farms that make up our rural areas and fuel our agricultural economy. Just think about that for a minute. We have 1,045 working farms within the boundaries of the city of Ottawa, mostly in our four rural townships, wards. To support even more job creation in our rural villages, staff have been working at, working hard at consulting with residents and businesses to develop a rural economic development strategy, which ARAK will be approving in the next few months. In the East End, the arrival last year of the Amazon Fulfillment Centre in Carlsbad Springs certainly delivered opportunities for this rural village, with the facility now providing employment to over 600 men and women. L'arrivée de cette grande entreprise...
This has created jobs for more than 600 residents.
Working on a roadmap to do this. Thanks to our Orleans Highway 174 Economic Corridor Study, we will identify available lands primed for development and target business opportunities to create jobs in the East End. And although the new Civic Hospital project is only in its infancy, we're working closely with the team at the Ottawa Hospital and the province to ensure that the planning continues to progress on this important healthcare facility for our region. All of these projects are helping us diversify our local economy while creating businesses and jobs in all parts of the city. To give a leg up to our local innovators and entrepreneurs, we opened the Innovation Centre at Bayview Yards in 2017, where Michael Tremblay and the team at Invest Ottawa are delivering the tools and coaching that will ensure our local startups continue to grow. They have so far accelerated and grown more than 200 small companies, local, and the centre is bursting at the seams. In November, you approved a two-story addition to Bayview Yards in order to meet the growing demand. And the demand, and with the demand for office commercial industrial space continuing to rise, vacancy rates reached new lows in 2019. According to Avison Young, one of Canada's largest commercial real estate firms, the Ottawa market shows no signs of slowing down in 2020. And as we know, there's a similar reality in the rental housing market across the city. As the vacancy rate drops, prices increase. I know that access to and affordability of housing has been top of mind for city council and for thousands of residents who are struggling to find a suitable place to live. But I'm proud that the two years in a row, this council has invested $15 million per year to build new affordable housing units for our residents in need. This two-year, $30 million investment is housing infrastructure in the single, is the single largest in the city of Ottawa's history. Working with our community partners and other levels of government, we leveraged this funding last year and launched many projects across the city, representing a total of 519 affordable housing units that are currently in the works. For instance, 140 units for seniors and families in Centertown with OCH, 40 supportive housing units in the Glebe Annex with the John Howard Society, 40 units dedicated to homeless veterans named in honour of former Air Force pilot Andy Carswell, delivered with multi-faith housing, 42 supportive housing units with the Shepherds of Good Hope near Molford Hospital, and 35 units and affordable and supportive housing in Bell's Corners with the Anglican Diocese of Ottawa. Nous travaillons avec tous nos par...
We're working with all our partners to provide these projects as quickly as possible.
Including 58 units for seniors on Cambridge Street South and a project with the Youth Services Bureau that delivered 39 supportive housing units for youth in Riverside Park. And just last fall, council approved a joint initiative with Ottawa Community Housing that will produce another 271 affordable housing units in Rideau Rock Cliff. We are currently working with our not-for-profit partners to ensure that the sites they have identified for affordable housing projects are shovel-ready this year and next. Last year, council also approved the refinancing of many OCH mortgages, which will generate as much as $35 million to reinvest in critical repairs to our existing social housing stock. I'm also committed to continuing our work with our federal and provincial partners to ensure that they take on an increased role and invest their fair share to help us tackle this housing crisis, which is being felt right across the country. I recently spoke to the Provincial Minister of Finance and the Housing Minister in advance of the provincial budget to stress the urgent need for new funding to support and build more affordable housing. And I'll be meeting with Federal Minister Ahmed Hussein later this week to ask the federal government to move forward with historic investments on affordable housing in the upcoming federal budget in order to reduce the 56% funding share currently being absorbed by municipalities across Ontario. The city is planning for longer-term opportunities to locate affordable housing near transit stations because affordable transit is also essential to many residents who cannot afford to own a car to get around the city. And that's why this year, Fedco approved a plan from the Interdepartmental Task Force on Housing to target 18 prime pieces of land that will become transit-oriented neighbourhoods. These publicly-owned properties along Bus Rapid Transit and the Trillium and Confederation Lines will be developed over the next 20 years and transformed into communities with a strong mix of affordable housing units. The first of these affordable housing projects will be located next to our Central Library project and will help us kick-start the revitalization of Le Breton Flats. And in response to record-low vacancy rates and market demand, private sector developers have launched a wave of apartment and multi-residential projects. For instance, earlier this year, we learned of the Bay Shore Centre's plans for two towers on its property, a project with 500 rental units for residents who want convenient access to the future Bay Shore station of Stage 2 LRT. And similar projects are planned for the Trillium Line with Arnon announcing its plans for six buildings containing 295 residential units within a few hundred metres of the Carling LRT. Carling LRT station. These are only two examples of many projects providing additional rental housing units while encouraging greater density along our light rail transit projects, and it's clearly good news in our city's efforts to also curb urban sprawl. In addition to these new developments, I'm encouraged that old and decrepit office buildings are being transformed into apartment rental buildings.
So we're seeing these old offices being made into nice apartments.
170 Metcalf at the corner of Nupian went online last summer with 64 rental units, which are almost all spoken for. The Old Government of Canada building at the corner of King Edward and Rideau is in the midst of a similar transformation and has been taking in U Ottawa students since last fall. Along the same line, we learned a few weeks ago that the office building at 473 Albert Street has been purchased by a real estate investment trust for the same purpose, and it will undergo a complete renewal this year that will add 153 units to the rental stock. What's encouraging is that the private sector is finding greater value in offering decent and affordable rental units rather than low-grade office space. And although I'm hopeful this increase in rental stock will provide some relief to apartment seekers, we know that the city has an important role to play in ensuring that housing remains accessible for our most vulnerable residents. I very much look forward to the important review of both the 10-year housing and homelessness plan, as well as the emergency shelter standards, a review that our Community and Protective Services Committee will undertake in the coming months. And there is more that can be done at the municipal level to address the issues of affordability and accessibility to housing. That's why last year, Community and Protective Services Committee considered a major report to regulate the business of short-term rentals and limit their presence in primary, to primary residences, which could bring back as many as 1,200 units into the long-term ownership or rental market. When this framework is implemented later this year, it will ensure that condos and apartment units cannot be purchased and used for the sole purpose of acting as illegal hotels. We know that over the last few years, this practice has negatively affected our community by reducing the housing stock, changing the fabric of our neighbourhoods, and in certain instances, has led to criminal activity in residential neighbourhoods. These are social issues that all large cities are faced with, but we must do everything we can to continue to address some of their root causes. That's why I'm proud of the work that city council has done in recent years to bolster the inclusion of underrepresented and vulnerable communities. Our ongoing efforts on indigenous reconciliation, affordable transit services by all residents by freezing the Equipass and the Equipair, the Transit Commission's ongoing work to decrease waiting times for paratranspo customers by introducing online booking, the appointment of our city's first women and gender equity liaison, and the creation of a women and gender equity strategy. These are all concrete actions that this council has endorsed to make sure our city is more inclusive and more livable for all. The development, for instance, of our women and gender equity strategy engaged over 400 residents last year and recently led to the productive consultations with members of our 2SL GLPTQ+ community. This team is also working in the process of establishing its working group, and they have engaged with 22 different community partners and allies that will help us envision and deliver on the strategy. In the last budget, we also set aside funding required to create an anti-racism strategy, which will complement our work on women and gender equity and help us fight back against racism in our community. Although our community is a welcoming and accepting one, as I learned firsthand when I came out last summer, there is always work left to do on this front, particularly at a time when populism and intolerance are on the rise around the world. Interestingly, a programme delivered by Economic Development is also helping us become a more supportive and inclusive community. One of the initiatives currently being piloted under the Innovation Pilot Programme in partnership with Ottawa Public Health is a mobile app called Timsley, which is revolutionizing the way we manage mental health. Created right here by Case Thomas, who's in the audience, Mr. Thomas, if you could stand up, thank you for being here, welcome, bienvenue. Creates a social accountability network that can help improve users' mental health by leveraging the support of family and friends. Users of the app are asked to establish goals like exercising, taking medication, or having healthy and regular meals, and then identify the friends or family members that will keep them on track and help them along the way. Users will then check in every day as they accomplish these tasks, but if they fail to do so, the app will notify members of their network so they can reach out to see if everything is okay and if they need further support. Ottawa Public Health has recognized its value in supporting positive mental health through strong routines and healthy living, and I'm pleased that Timsley is being added to our community's wellness toolbox. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the team at Ottawa Public Health for their efforts to tackle the vaping epidemic which has invaded our schoolyards. We must do much more to combat teenagers' access to these deceptive and dangerous vaping products. I want to thank Premier Ford, who acted quickly, only a few days after I called him on this topic, to announce a ban on the promotion of these products in convenience stores and gas stations. Unfortunately, companies are using appealing flavours and marketing to win over these customers, and the federal government must also act quickly on this front nationwide in order to protect our teenagers from these hazardous side effects. As an inclusive society, it's also our responsibility to provide a safe environment for marginalized or vulnerable residents, and the city does that on a number of fronts. With the coronavirus having now made its way to 16 countries, including Canada, Dr. Etches and her team at OPH are keeping a close eye on the matter and working with their healthcare partners to make sure that Ottawa is prepared to deal with any local cases. I look forward to Dr. Etches's update, along with Tony Demonte, following my remarks. I was encouraged when Chief Slowly, who is with us, I believe, here today, thank you, chief, announced a few weeks ago the creation of three new neighbourhood resource teams, which are a pillar of the OPS community policing strategy. This announcement follows the successful deployment of three teams in Vanyer Overbrook, Herengate South Ottawa, and Carlington Caldwell in 2019. These three new teams will be deployed in the Byward Market lower town in May, followed by Centertown and Bay Shore in the fall.
These new teams will have a constant presence in our communities.
Be dedicated exclusively to their assigned neighbourhoods, where they'll spend a minimum of two years working with residents and community agencies to tackle crime and its underlying socio-economic factors. I also welcomed the decision of the Ottawa Police Services Board just a few days ago to support Chief Slowly's plan to hire 100 officers this year, fast-tracking the officers slated for between now and 2023. This move will see 100 road-ready officers be fully deployed and improving public safety in our communities by next year, and supporting initiatives like neighbourhood policing, reducing gun and gang violence, and violence against women. We also need to ensure that our neighbourhood streets remain safe for children and families to play. And that's why in 2019, the Transportation Committee made permanent the successful pedestrian crossover programme, which has led to a reduction in collisions where these have been installed. The committee also enacted a series of road safety measures to protect vulnerable users, starting with the creation of eight new community safety zones meant to protect children walking to nearby schools and community parks. And with the recent approval from the province, transportation staff will start deploying automated speed enforcement measures in the coming months with the goal of eliminating speeding and dangerous driving around children in those safety zones and around schools. A few months ago, the Transportation Committee also adopted its third strategic road safety action plan, a comprehensive roadmap to reduce by 20% the rate of fatal and major injury collisions over the next five years. In 2020, this plan will lead to investments of $31.5 million in road safety measures and initiatives, up from $25 million in 2019, which will help make our streets safer for all road users, including downtown, in the suburbs, and on our rural roads. Over the next few years, the plan will deliver traffic calming measures in school zones, improvements to warranted pedestrian signals, and infrastructure changes that will make our streets safer. To help us deliver these initiatives, the revenue generated by all new red light cameras installed beyond 2020 will be directed to funding this strategic road action safety plan. And we're seeing results from some of the measures that Safer Roads Ottawa has piloted and deployed just last year. I'm happy to report that in the seven months following the launch of the school bus stop arm camera project last May, the Ottawa Police have laid a total of 110 charges of $490 each to drivers who had dangerously failed to stop for a school bus. Now, to put this in perspective, OPS officers had issued an average of 35 fines per year in the two years leading up to the launch programme, and just last year, that number went to 110. These are people who are being completely irresponsible and doing an illegal task of running the flashing lights of a school bus. Since it was first introduced in 2016, OPS has leveraged its now five automated licence plate recognition units to apprehend close to 800 suspended drivers still roaming freely on our roads. It's also generated close to $2.7 million in fine revenue for the city. In 2020, Transportation Committee will consider safety countermeasures for 34 high-volume intersections with heavy traffic and cycling interactions, and our cycling community will also benefit from the adoption and implementation of a city's bike parking strategy. And we are constantly providing our residents with more options to get around our city without using a car. This year, I was excited to open the beautiful new Flora Foot Bridge, and it was one of the highlights of my year at City Hall. The popular bridge over the Rideau Canal now connects the residents of Old Ottawa East to Lansdowne and the Glebe, and it greatly enhances our pedestrian and cycling networks. And between its opening day and January 22nd, it has been used by pedestrians and cyclists close to 450,000 times.
Flora Bridge became an important link within the community.
It will be as great when we reopen the Harmer Avenue pedestrian and cycling bridge this fall, which will finally connect the Civic Hospital and Wellington West communities. And in honour of a true community builder, I will bring forward a proposal to name the bridge after former mayor Jackie Holtzman, who now lives in Kitchess Cippi. As a passionate advocate for the... As a passionate advocate for the disabled and the first Jewish woman to become mayor of Ottawa, Jackie worked tirelessly during her time at City Hall to bridge differences between communities and to unite residents around important issues. I hope city council and residents will join me in supporting the naming proposal and the well-deserved acknowledgement of Jackie's contributions to our community. Please join me in welcoming Jackie Holtzman. This coming spring, we'll also begin a number of major renewal projects, which will greatly revitalize certain neighbourhoods. Vanyer will benefit from the revitalization of Montreal Road, which will take place over the next two years in conjunction with the development of the Montreal Road Community Improvement Plan. Jointly, these two initiatives will help us inject vitality and attract investments and urban renewal to Vanyer. Following the opening of LRT, the redevelopment of Mackenzie Avenue and Rideau Street from Sussex to Dalhousie will start this spring to rejuvenate this arts, culture, and fashion district, connecting the Byward Market to the new Ottawa Art Gallery and Arts Court. With the addition of bike lanes and some greenery, Rideau Street will become more livable and inviting, especially for shoppers and commuters using the Rideau Station of LRT. This year, we'll also complete the revitalization of Elgin Street, which will feature much wider sidewalks, benches, and trees. I know this great street will regain its glory and soon become a pedestrian destination. We're seeing that renewal projects like Main Street, Queen Street, Montreal Road, and Elgin Street are all revitalizing neighbourhoods and creating business and job opportunities for the future, and that's why we're also planning for the revitalization of Spark Street and the Byward Market. There are only a few, these are only a few of the investments we are making to maintain our extensive road network in good condition for all road users, cyclists, and automobiles and buses. This year, the city will invest $51 million in road resurfacing projects across the city, up from the yearly average of $33.5 million over the last term of council. We're also investing $66.2 million for growth projects that will benefit communities in rapidly expanding neighbourhoods who use roads like Strandherd, Campo, and Canada South Link. And because these residents across the city have to benefit, or rather, and because residents across the city have to benefit from these improvements, we are making critical investments of $44.5 million in our rural infrastructure, up from the four-year average of $39.7. This will deliver a number of important culvert projects that will improve the conditions of many rural roads and bridges, like Spruce Ridge Road in West Carlton, Ashton Station Road in Rideau Gulburn, and River Road in Osgood.
And we also invest for the development of our Francophone community, which is established in every corner of the city. I look forward to officially opening the Maison de la Francophonie tomorrow evening, a multi-service hub that will be very important for the Francophone community in the West End. And I'm proud that the city's role is giving the project a home by donating the former Grant School on Richmond Road to CMFO. Following several years of community efforts, I want to thank all the volunteers who contributed hundreds of hours to achieving this project, as well as the Conseil des Écoles publiques, which ensured that the centre was completed. I am certain that tomorrow's event will be a memorable opportunity to celebrate the opening of this important facility and to recognize the contributions of volunteers in the community.
The city are behind the success of these countless initiatives that strengthen our community. I want to take this opportunity to thank our city manager, Steve Cantalacas, and his entire city senior leadership team, and all of our dedicated staff at the city. They work day in and day out to make sure Ottawa is a wonderful place to live and work. In 2019, I know it was a tough and demanding year for many teams at the city, and I thank all of you for the sacrificed family time and the personal commitments to ensure that you are serving our residents and our communities in times of need. Finally, I'm pleased to announce that this year I will be recognizing the work of distinguished individuals, as well as an organization who have made our city proud by presenting the key to the city. Accomplished golfer and three-time Canadian Press Female Athlete of the Year Brooke Henderson.
General Governor and Journalist and Ambassador of Francophonie, Michael Jean.
Carleton University and Ottawa resident James Duffy. And last but not least, The Ottawa Citizen, an organization that has been providing news coverage in the nation's capital for 175 years, the longest continuous local business in Ottawa to date. There is a lot to celebrate in Ottawa, and we're sometimes too modest when boasting about our city. But when speaking recently about Ottawa's employment growth, Sean Hamilton, who's Senior Vice President CBRE in Ottawa, recently acknowledged that, quote, "A confluence of well-timed events, a thriving tech scene, multiple post-secondary institutions, easy access to green space, and new infrastructure such as the new library and a new hospital coming down the pipe have contributed to an upward spiral for the city, and I'm hard-pressed to find a strike against us for growth," end quote. And similar aspirations were echoed in Harley Finkelstein and Lindsay Taub's lovely letter to Ottawa, published in The Citizen at the end of December, in which they state, quote, "In the next decade, we can transform this city by saying yes more often." I love their enthusiasm and passion for this great city we all call home, and I believe they come at it with the right attitude, recognizing, quote, "There's a lot of work to be done, but there's also much opportunity ahead," end quote. I very much share their point of view, that there is a lot we can do to brighten the future of our city. We need to invest in our infrastructure if we want our local economy to continue to prosper, sustaining good-paying jobs in communities around the city. But we also must ensure that this rising tide of prosperity lifts all boats and helps us support residents from all walks of life, including those who are the most vulnerable. I believe city council can deliver on all of these goals if we continue to take the right approach. There's an ancient African proverb that says, "If you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together."
I invite you all to continue together this important work to sustain our city.
Contributions, and I look forward to the year ahead. Thank you, merci beaucoup.
Be it resolved that Mayor's remarks given at city council meeting on January 29, 2020 be appended to the minutes of today's council meeting.
The motion carried, thank you. Counselor Egli, if I could ask you to join Dr. Etches. We have a verbal update from Dr. Vera Etches on the city's response to coronavirus. As you know, Counselor Egli is the Chair of the Public Health Board, Dr. Etches is the Medical Officer of Health, and Mr. Demonte will also be speaking after Dr. Etches on the situation that is facing the world. Counselor Egli, could have your opening comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everyone knows, there is a health situation that is worldwide, and we can't ignore that fact in Ottawa. So I have been working with Dr. Etches and her team, and she- So I have been working with Dr. Etches and her team, and she's going to set out today where we are in terms of our response to the virus, what we know to date, what we'll be doing going forward, and then she'll be available to take any questions that council members might have.
Mayor Watson and members of council, quai, bonjour. Merci de m'accorder cette opportunité.
Thank you for the opportunity of giving you an update on the situation on this virus.
Cluster of cases of pneumonia in December 2019, which were later confirmed as caused by a new type of coronavirus not previously seen in humans. So Ottawa Public Health is following the lead of the Ontario Ministry of Health, Public Health Ontario, the Public Health Agency of Canada, and we're together responding to the novel coronavirus. Our focus is keeping the people of Ottawa well. Coronaviruses are a large family of viruses. They can cause infections ranging from the common cold to severe infections, such as severe acute respiratory syndrome, best known as SARS. Symptoms of infection with this new coronavirus range from mild to severe illness, including fevers, cough, runny nose, and shortness of breath. Les symptômes de l'infection sont la fièvre, la...
The symptoms are fever, coughing, runny nose, and respiratory problems.
Pneumonia and deaths are mainly being reported in older adults and people with underlying medical conditions. Chinese officials in Wuhan, as well as other cities in Hubei Province, are implementing exceptional measures to reduce further spread of the virus. And given the safety and security risks associated with these measures, the Government of Canada recommends that Canadians avoid all travel to Hubei Province. At this time, the population at risk for infection with the novel coronavirus is people who have visited Wuhan and the surrounding province of Hubei, and people who have been in close contact with someone who has a respiratory illness who has been to the Hubei Province within the 14 days prior to the onset of that respiratory illness. The 14 days is the maximum incubation period observed for this virus, and that's the time between when someone may have been exposed and infected with the virus to when symptoms develop. The typical incubation period for this virus appears to be much shorter, more like a few days, though our information is evolving. There are travelers who have returned from the affected area and who were screened in airports in Toronto, Vancouver, and Montreal, and they were given messaging about how to take precautions during these 14 days to limit exposure to others if they develop symptoms. Ottawa Public Health has strong partnerships with local hospitals, which test for the novel coronavirus, and we're sharing provincial guidance to support primary healthcare providers in the community. So I can confirm that rigorous processes are in place to screen individuals suspected of a novel coronavirus exposure, people undergoing assessment are isolated, and employees in the healthcare settings are protected from infection. We have information on our website, and we are receiving phone calls to guide healthcare practitioners, as well as members of the public, through assessment for novel coronavirus. And I encourage anyone who visits a hospital to read and follow instructions on hospital signage. So as of last evening, about 40 people in Ontario have been investigated with a lab test to rule out or detect the novel coronavirus, given the history of travel to an affected area or exposure to someone ill who traveled to the affected area. Most of these tests have been negative. Two cases have been identified in Toronto. And there's been one instance in the city of Ottawa where the decision was made to order the lab test to rule out the novel coronavirus. If this test comes back positive, I will certainly be communicating about this. And if a confirmed case of the novel coronavirus were to be identified in Ottawa, Ottawa Public Health would work with the Ministry of Health, the Provincial Public Health Ontario Laboratory, local hospitals, and we would be working together to manage the case and any contacts. Of the three confirmed or presumptive cases in Canada, all are doing well. So as I mentioned earlier, this situation is evolving, and prevention of transmission of the respiratory virus is key. There are things that residents can and should do to reduce the spread of infection, and these are useful for limiting influenza, which is in our community at this time. So I recommend that everyone wash your hands, and wash them often with soap or water, or use alcohol hand sanitizer. I'm just touching my nose now, as I'm about to say, avoid touching your nose, it's very hard. Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, your mouth, unless you've just washed your hands, which I do. Cover your cough, and please sneeze into a tissue or your arm, not into your hands. If possible, stay home when you're sick. On recommande de vous laver souvent les mains.
Please wash your hands often with soap and water, or use a sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, or your mouth, except if you've just washed your hands. Cover your mouth when you cough or sneeze with Kleenex or with your arm. And if possible, stay home if you're sick.
Visiting people in hospitals or long-term care centers if you're sick, and it is still important to get your flu shot as influenza season continues. You will likely have seen in the media discussion surrounding face masks. In Ottawa, there is no public health guidance to suggest you need to wear a mask if you're well. Masks can provide a false sense of security as people continue to touch the masks and their face. The best advice continues to be wash your hands frequently. The health and safety of people in Ottawa is my priority. Ma priorité est la santé et la sécurité de la population ici. And the Ottawa Public Health team has activated an incident management structure to focus efforts on being vigilant to detect and limit spread of the novel coronavirus. Ottawa Public Health is keeping a close watch on the evolving situation, and we're responding in collaboration with partners. I will continue to keep the public updated, as well as city and council. Merci. And now I want to ask our colleague, Tony Demonte, to speak to the paramedic response, and then we're both happy to take questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Etches. Monsieur Maumanskonse, bonjour. Members of the council, Mayor, hello. Of our colleagues in public health, the Office of Emergency Management is following closely the updates, and as we had done in SARS and H1N1, are in situational awareness, ready to support the professionals of Ottawa Public Health and Dr. Etches and her team as she leads this issue in our city. The second is the Ottawa Paramedic Service. As Dr. Etches indicated, our objective here is to ensure that the safety of the community and the spread is limited. And so the province of Ontario has updated our febrile respiratory infection screening tool, meaning that if you dial 911 and you have a fever, difficulty breathing, et cetera, normally you would be asked a series of questions, and we would simply respond to the call. An additional series of questions will be asked of people calling 911 and going to the paramedic service, asking about international travel or contact with people who have had international travel in the last 14 days, particularly to China, and it's more broadly because it's just call-taking at that point. And that information will be communicated to the paramedics responding, or our tier agencies, whether it's fire or police, that may be responding certain categories of calls as well, too, in order to allow the responding officers information so they can protect themselves before arriving at the scene with the proper protective equipment. The paramedics also have been given new clinical tools that when they arrive to assess patients, additional questions will be asked of the patient to get more precise information about if there was international travel, where it was. At that point, if the index of suspicion arises, the patient, through the work of Dr. Etches and the hospital community, will be brought to a designated hospital that's already identified, to an isolation center. Obviously, the medical staff at that institution will be advised and will be prepared and protected as well to receive these patients. Our objective is to ensure the proper care of these patients and to ensure limited exposure to anyone else in the community. The Office of Emergency Management, as I mentioned, is in situational awareness to support. And on Monday, I had the opportunity with Police Chief Solely and Dr. Etches to meet on another subject, and we took the time. So the police service as well, and Chief Solely is offering his support to Dr. Etches and the great public health team that we have here. So on the city perspective as well, our objective is to support public health in any way and ensure that our community is safe. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, all three. Merci pour votre...
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions?
Please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the update. It's much appreciated. Dr. Etches, just regarding the assessments at the international airports, can you just describe what that entails? The CBC last night reported three large planes came in. There was nothing done for incoming passengers, but for assessments you're aware of, who's doing the assessing? If they detect symptoms that correlate to the virus, what happens?
Thank you for your question. It is through Montreal, Toronto, and Vancouver where the federal government has implemented screening measures. My understanding is that these involve specific scripts. There are specific screening questions that are being asked of travelers, as well information for airline staff about how to limit contact with individuals as they deplane. It is the Canadian border services that would be involved in working with the local health department to make sure that if somebody has symptoms of a respiratory infection, then they're isolated and there's a process for them to be assessed. So they're also making sure that every passenger has information about where to seek help if they develop symptoms later, because many people, if they're incubating, an infection will not have symptoms on the plane. And that information is translated into at least three languages, and it's being given out to passengers.
Even though the Ottawa Airport does not receive any international flights from Asia, we do receive American flights, where people may fly to Chicago or Dulles, transfer, and then come directly to Ottawa. Is there anything at all in Ottawa's airport signage, handouts from our customs agents regarding...
Yes, so the Ottawa Airport staff have been part of all of our teleconferences, planning our response to the situation. They received their guidance, again, from the Public Health Agency of Canada around what needs to be in place. They have changed practices so that they are increasing messaging related to handwashing, cleaning common areas in the airport more frequently. They continue to be connected to us, and if further guidance was needed, then we would implement changes.
Okay, good. Thanks very much. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Meehan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Demonte, since we've implemented the more rigorous questions when people call 911, has it resulted in any people who we've identified as having some of the symptoms or have traveled internationally that are here now?
Mayor, no. As Dr. Etches has indicated, we have not yet seen that in Ottawa, fortunately. That said, in the initial screening, yes, there was some information on a couple of calls that there was international travel, but it wasn't in China or any of the suspect provinces. So there was no follow-up, in essence, that no patient had to be transported to the specific hospital. So as of now, not yet, no.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Tierney.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation, Doctor and Chair. I'm seeing a few things on Facebook, and I remember the old SARS days, where sports teams suggested at the end of their matches, hockey and otherwise, not to shake hands. Are we at that point yet, or is this still early days?
Definitely understand people are taking a closer look at infection prevention and control practices. Appreciate that. It's always good. The population at risk here is people who have a travel history or a connection to someone who was ill after travel, and so we don't need to make those kinds of recommendations for the general population. You know, it's an evolving situation. If that changes, we'll certainly look at other measures.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Any other questions to the Medical Officer of Health or Mr. Demonte? No. Okay. Thank you very much. Merci pour votre présentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
...minutes, adoption of process verbal for la réunion 11 décembre 2019. Carried. Declaration of interest, including those arising from prior meetings, la claireation de conflits d'intérêt. Communications as presented, regrets. Counselor Deans advised she'd be absent from the City Council meeting of 29th of January 2019. See motion number 20/1 of September 25, 2019. Motion to introduce reports, motion important, presentation de rapport. Counselor Gower, please. Seconded by Counselor Luloff.
Built Heritage Subcommittee reports nine and 10. Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water, and Waste Management report eight. Planning Committee reports 18 and 19. And the reports from the city clerk entitled Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending November 24... Sorry, January 24, 2020. And Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act. Explanation requirements at the City Council Meeting of December 11, 2019 be received and considered. And that the petition with respect to Counselor McKennie's housing emergency motion listed on the agenda be received.
On the motion, carried. So to Mr. and Mrs. Gower, your son just passed a unanimous motion, so congratulations. Reports, rapport, la grève municipale, status update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending November... Sorry, I think that should just say November.
January.
Ending January 24, 2020. Rapport de situation demande renseignement et motion du conseil pour la période terminant le 24 janvier. So just remove the word "November" from the minutes. Received. Committee reports, Built Heritage Subcommittee Report number nine, rapport numéro neuf de sous-comité de patrimoine bâti. Item number two, designation of the former Traders Bank of Canada, 1824, Farwell Street under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act. Designation de l'édifice de l'ancien Traders Bank of Canada situé au 1, 8, 4, rue Farwell au terme de la partie 4 de la voie sur le patrimoine de l'Ontario.
Carried.
Carried. Built Heritage Subcommittee Report number 10, rapport numéro 10 de sous-comité de patrimoine bâti. Phase II, Clammo Estate Heritage Conservation District Study. Designation of the Clammo-Monklin driveway and Linden Terrace Heritage Conservation District. Phase II, l'étude de district de conservation de patrimoine de domaine Clammo. Designation de district de conservation de patrimoine de la promenade Clammo-Monklin et de la terrasse Linden. Carried. Adopted. Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water, and Waste Management Report number eight. Rapport numéro huit de comité de permanent de la protection de l'environnement de l'eau et de la gestion des déchets. Item four, Climate Change Master Plan and Energy Evolution Model. Plan de directeur de la changement de climatique et modèle évolution énergétique. Carried. Congratulations to the committee, Mr. Chair. Item five, Tree Bylaw Review Project, projet d'examiner de règlements de les arbres. Counselor Moffett, I believe, seconded by Counselor Cloutier, has a motion. Counselor Moffett, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Yes, there was some brief discussion at committee regarding a requested motion from staff. We felt we didn't have all the information to make an informed decision at that time. So staff came back, reviewed the motion, and brought forward a motion again, which I am putting forward as Chair of the Committee, seconded by Counselor Cloutier. And I'll ask staff to comment on this after I introduce the motion. So whereas the report in question proposes a new tree protection bylaw to support the protection and enhancement of the city's urban tree canopy, and whereas the proposed bylaw includes permit fees on a per-tree basis for the removal of distinctive trees, and whereas the permit fee for removing a tree is not associated with infill development is $150 per tree, up to a maximum of $750 per tree... or sorry, yeah, $750... sorry, for the five trees. I need to make that make more sense, because that didn't make sense. And whereas the permit fee for removing a tree that is associated with infill development is $500 per tree with no maximum limit set, and whereas after discussing with stakeholders and for consistency reasons, staff now recommend implementing a maximum permit fee for infill development to avoid overcharging applicants for the cost of processing a permit, and whereas application fees for permits under the Municipal Act are to be established with the goal of cost recovery, and whereas there is no maximum limit on the tree compensation requirements, therefore be resolved that the bylaw be amended... requirements, therefore be resolved that the bylaw be amended to set the maximum permit fee for infill development at $2,500, or five trees, to correspond with the limit set for non-infill tree removals. So I will ask if Mr. Willis can respond, because I know that it said there was some discussion at committee about this, and committee was not satisfied with the response at that time. So if you could just please elaborate.
So, Mr. Mayor, for council's benefit, there are two different types of charges that come into play in a tree removal situation. One is the permit processing fee, and the second is compensation levels. Compensation levels are tied to the number of trees removed, and that does not change with this motion. So the more trees you remove, the more compensation you pay, remembering our main goal is to avoid removal in the first place. But if that is actually approved, more is paid. So in any development infill, it is completely tied to the number of trees removed for infill, for the compensation component. The staff processing fee of $500 is meant to cover our costs, administrative costs of doing the work through the process. It is very rare, when we look at our numbers, that we ever get more than five trees removed in an application. So this applies to a very small percentage of the applications, and we looked at the amount of time we spent processing and the number of four trees versus five versus more, and it really is the same amount of time. So under the intent of the municipal act, we're supposed to charge for our cost recovery for that processing fee. We felt that the equivalent limit to what we applied to non-infill situations is appropriate, remembering that we're charging $500 for an infill situation as opposed to $150 for individual homeowners. So we're already getting more revenue in, in an infill situation than we would with individual homeowners, and we feel that this is a reasonable response to make some parity in the bylaw. But it does not apply to the compensation for which there will be no limit.
Counselor Kavanaugh had the mic first. There was a little technical issue, so we'll ask Counselor Kavanaugh to speak and then go back to Counselor Leeper.
Thank you very much. I want to thank staff for working on this motion. This has been going forward for a long time, and I think that it's something that's very close to my heart because of what's happened in Queens Bay Terrace North, where we've had infill homes, where developers can say that they're going to save a tree, and then it's impossible to save it. And that is what really pushed me to want to see this tree bylaw. I'd like to think that this is a first step. This is not the end of it, that we still have to keep pushing on this. But the big change in this is the fact that we have foresters involved in the first steps, that they are there at the beginning of the process so they can look at properties, look at trees, and say what kind of housing infill can fit in and still save the tree, especially when they're heritage trees, when we're talking about canopy in developed streets that have been there for a long time. It's heart-wrenching to see the number of trees, especially when we have to endure what's happening with Stage II LRT as well. It's been really, really rough, seeing trees go down. And so every tree that we can save, because of just good planning, having foresters part of the team, is really, really important. So I want to thank Martha and her group of the foresters. She's done a great job. But my question is, is this just a first step? Can we continue from this? Because I think there's still more work to do.
Mr. Mayor, just in response to the counsel's question, this certainly is the first step. The next phase of bylaw implementation, where both departments, public works and environmental services in our department are working together, will lower the threshold for which the tree would be required, and that's part of the implementation later in the next phase of the project.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Kavanaugh, Counselor Leeper, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Just in terms of clarity, when we are currently charging the permit fee, is it on a per-tree basis today?
That's correct.
And the motion would amend that regime such that one, you'll charge $500 for the first tree, $1,000 for two trees, all the way up, but past five, it now is just included in the initial fee. Each, when you're processing a permit, what kind of work is done? Is there a difference between processing a permit for one tree versus four that justifies the fact that we are charging an incremental rate on a per-tree basis?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Ms. Cope-Stake to answer that question, but just to understand in the context, we, in this bylaw change, we are addressing the permit application fee, but we did increase substantially the compensation fees through this bylaw. So, Ms. Cope-Stake.
Hi. Excuse me. Hi. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, when we're looking at the applications, as you know, you know, the more trees that have to be removed sort of increases the complexity of the application, so it's sort of the more amount of time that we have to spend on the site, looking at what's happening, talking to the developer, talking to the arborists that are involved in giving the application. And so that's sort of where we looked at, when we were looking at the non-infill development scenarios, that's where we looked at. Once we sort of get up to that five trees, above that, it's not too much more time. Obviously, though, in the non-infill development scenario, we're rarely going to even get to that. It's usually one tree, you know, so we're rarely going to get to that cap. But for an infill development scenario, it's just, you know, looking at that application, if it's more than one tree, the complexity increases, and we feel that once you get up to that five level, the complexity isn't increasing. And as Mr. Willis already said, we're not often getting over that five number anyway. So...
But there is incrementally more work per tree in processing the permit?
And we have determined that up to that five level, it sort of plateaus out at that point. But we're not, we're very rarely seeing applications where we're seeing more than that.
Why was five chosen? And perhaps, perhaps it's honestly, are staff supportive of the recommended amendment?
Yes, I am supportive of it.
Okay. And so why is five the right number?
Mr. Mayor, I think that was done in consultation as part of our broader consultation process. We dealt with a lot of individual homeowners who were worried about the impacts of this. We set this to be fair. It was a reflection on workload, as Ms. Cope-Stake said. Five is a number, it's almost a diminishing number of applications we hit. So if you, it ran the bell curve of the number of trees we typically deal with, this is a very small percentage at the end of that curve. So it's really more a function of the frequency of the applications while we set the number there.
So the spurt of this, I understand, is coming from the home builders, who are afraid of a fee that would have no ceiling, potentially?
Mr. Mayor, this is a very small fee compared to what we're charging in compensation for which there is no limit, and I don't believe at the end of the day it will affect the viability of a single project, this administrative fee. We're trying to keep with the spirit of the municipal act and the intent of it and be compliant with the municipal act as a fee that is geared to our level of effort.
And I recognize that, and I'm sorry for being obstinate on this, but if there is one tree, we charge 500 bucks. A second tree adds more complexity, there's more work, so we have to charge 200. A third tree, and then I have to assume that that increased complexity doesn't stop because it's over five. Each tree adds complexity in terms of looking at it. What was the reaction of the stakeholder groups, such as, you know, Ecology Ottawa, some of the other tree advocates, when presented with this amendment?
In all fairness, Mr. Mayor, the consultation has been more directly with the people who asked for the change in the first place, and they raised that issue at, this issue was discussed at committee. They're the ones affected by it, so we don't have an answer as to what other groups would feel. But as I said, I will maintain that our effort and focus is on the compensation level tied to the number of trees, which is significant.
I won't take the mic again, so I'll take this opportunity to say thank you for the work that you've been putting in, Martha particularly. This has been a multi-year effort, and I know it's been slow, it's a lot of work. This is another major piece. There are more major pieces to go, and I appreciate the work that you've done on this. And, Mr. Willis, I appreciate the leadership that you've given in directing our planning department and others to put a greater focus on saving trees and infills, so I do want to recognize that. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn the mic over.
Thank you. Counselor Menard.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate, like, Counselor Kavanaugh and Counselor Leeper, the bylaw that we've come up with here. I really appreciate staff's effort on the overall bylaw. I'm happy we're going to pass that here today. Saying that, though, I think it's a little unfortunate, this motion has come forward. It came forward in Environment Committee and was withdrawn there because it was likely going to lose an Environment Committee. And so I want to ask some questions to Ms. Cope-Stake about this. Just so people understand, we're not talking about any tree on a lot, we're talking about distinctive trees. So that is greater than 50 centimeters or 30 coming up. Just to clarify, that these are distinctive trees for these permits?
Yes, this is for the distinctive tree portion.
Okay. And, Ms. Cope-Stake, I know you looked at a lot of other cities and what they do with tree removals with regard to this system, speaking to this motion. Out of all those cities that you looked at, how many actually had a cap for maximum on the infill development side?
The cities that we looked at, actually, so I have a list here of five, and two of them have caps. So it's not something that's been employed by other cities.
Right. But other cities, so, you know, we'd be an outlier on this, I guess, but the other cities that have, don't have caps, they're within their right not to have caps, they're not being challenged on the municipal act. That's not really something that is a concern at this point for those cities, because they have no caps on their infill development. Ms. Cope-Stake, how many trees are coming down for our urban canopy? I know there's been studies recently that have come out, Carle University and others. What is the percentage of trees we are losing in our urban canopy in the last several years?
I don't have the numbers for the last several years, and I don't have sort of a number of trees, per se. We've done, we did a study, though, that I think you're referring to, where we looked at in several different neighborhoods of the city where we've seen an increase in infill development over the last sort of 10 years or so. So we looked at the tree cover, so it's sort of a point sample type thing, where we looked at the tree cover in 2008 versus 2017. And what we found, what in these five neighborhoods that we looked at, that between 30 and 50% of the trees that we surveyed in 2008 were not there in 2017.
Okay. So it's fair to say we're rapidly losing our tree canopy cover. And I also wanted to key in on that, Mr. Willis had mentioned, this is a pretty rare situation. We're not going to get a lot of applications that actually have more than five distinctive trees come in to do this. So it'll be a handful of developers that may buy a lot with, say, 40 trees on them, 40 distinctive trees, that may have to pay a little bit more if this motion doesn't passes, doesn't pass. And I've heard from the development industry, they've flagged a couple of scenarios. They've said, look, it, there's been, we can think of two, where this has come in more than five. And so they said the fees were $15,000 to $20,000. And so if you look at a fee of $20,000, that means they're cutting down 40 distinctive trees. If they were only cutting down, if we pass this bylaw today and they're cutting down 40 distinctive trees, they're still just paying 2,500. If they cut down six, just 2,500 plus the permit fee, I understand, 10, 2,500. So that's why it's important to keep a cap on this. For the handful of people that'll come and buy a big lot with 40 distinctive trees, this is something that I think will help protect our urban tree canopy, or if they're not, you know, you have to pay to cut down, cut down trees. I understand the difference between the permit and the other fee. So this wasn't in the original staff report. They didn't come with this. This was added later on because the development industry had some concerns. I think we need to side with the tree canopy cover that we've got here to make sure that, look, if you're taking down that many trees as a developer, you're going to have to pay a little bit more for that. And other cities do this now, it's within the municipal act, they have this system set up, the majority of them do. So I just urge you, vote down this amendment. It was going to fail in Environment Committee, and it should fail here as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor, thanks. We can just hold the applause. Thank you. Counselor Suds, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in this conversation, I think it's a bit distinct to talk about infill in the urban core versus suburban. And when I think about some of the infill that's being proposed in Kanata North, we're not talking about five trees, we're talking about 500 trees. And so I'm trying to get my head around what, understanding that this cap is being proposed on the application side at 2,500, what does this look like? I'm hearing compensation is increasing. Are we talking about actually overall? Does that mean they're going to pay more or pay less when you take into account compensation as well?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to give an initial answer, and as Ms. Cope-Stake to elaborate on this. When we're dealing with situations in Kanata North, we are generally dealing with plans of subdivision applications, and those are under a different set of rules. These rules would not apply. They're subject to the tree review program, the compensation requirements that come under a plan of subdivision. So in those large number of trees, that is a completely separate process. So this motion would not apply to that situation.
Even when they're classified as infill?
Yes. If there is a separate, if there is a plan of subdivision application, Mr. Mayor, this motion does not apply, because it's covered through the plan of subdivision approval process, which has a different mechanisms altogether.
So taking that aside, would net compensation or net fees overall be increasing when you take the compensation and application fees?
Mr. Mayor, I want to emphasize for council's benefit on the entire program, staff agree that we are trying to discourage tree removal. We are trying to make it much more difficult. We are recommending that we jack up the compensation requirements, because that's the tool we recommend council uses to send that stick, that we don't want this to happen. The administrative application fees are not the tool we recommend to focus on, and if council, you know, we believe we've given a very solid recommendation for focusing on using the compensation program to encourage, discourage removals.
So if I can just, one final question. What is happening to the compensation program? Can you crystallize that a bit?
So the changes that we've made for compensation are basically that we, for city trees, we've always required compensation when they get removed as a part of, at all, for any reason, whether it's a city infrastructure project, or if it's a site plan or plan of subdivision or an infill development. We have a formula that we use. We've basically formalized that method by putting it into the bylaw and having a schedule of the bylaw that says specifically when we use that formula. And in addition to that, it's a dollar amount, and they have to plant a tree in addition to paying the dollar amount. For privately-owned trees, we've never had a compensation requirement before. So we've had language in the official plan around determining a compensation value. Our urban forest management plan suggested we create a compensation program for trees on private property. And so through this bylaw amendment, or this new bylaw that we've created, we've developed a set of compensation requirements for private land, and that will work, basically, it's Schedule B of the bylaw. And the way that will work is that, I'm just going to put it in front of me so I don't mess it up, basically for the average homeowner that has to remove a distinctive tree in their backyard unrelated to development, so if, you know, the tree is sick or causing a problem for some reason, it would be a one-to-one ratio. So if you get a permit to remove the tree, you have to plant a new tree in its place. If it's an infill development scenario, we're doing it, and this is within the urban core, we're doing it that it's a three-to-one ratio. So if you remove one distinctive tree, you have a permit to remove one distinctive tree, you have to plant three trees in their place. We recognize that in a lot of cases, three trees won't be able to be planted. It costs us, the city, about $400 to plant a tree, so each of those trees would be, have a value of $400. So if you plant one, you pay us 800. If you plant two, you pay us 400. If you can't plant any, you pay 1,200. That's per tree that you remove. And so that's how it works. With the site plans and plans of subdivision, like what's happening in your neck of the woods, the, well, both the application fee is covered through our planning fees, and then the compensation is covered through that landscape plan, that tree conservation report review, and so we cover it off that way. You know, into the future, we may look a little bit more at what that balance is and see if it's working out. But for now, we find that that's working, and we're getting good landscape plans and compensation that way.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Suds. Conseilier Cloutier, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire, and thank you. And thank you for the work you did, and the work that the Environment Committee did on December 17 with respect to the tree bylaw, the overall tree bylaw. Let's not, let's not lose sight of that as we debate this motion. The permit fees are used specifically to fund department operations for the inspection and the processing of those, of the applications we will receive. That's what they're used for. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
And to the best of... And to the best of your calculations, and I recognize it's based on estimated number of applications that will be received, how many new forestry officials will these application fees fund?
So, Mr. Mayor, the additional fees are going to finance staff within the Forestry Division of Public Works and Environmental Services as part of the inspection component of the program. And the report does indicate we have a phase-in program over time. So I believe initially, it's too initially, but the program, as we get the, the new threshold, where we're going to be much stricter about where the, which trees are applied, that could grow in time.
Okay. Thank you. And, and the permit fees, again, like development application fees, need to be adjusted up or down in subsequent, in subsequent budgets with respect to the cost recovery aspect of, of what permit fees are?
Mr. Mayor, the Counsel is quite correct. If the, if these fees do not cover our costs in future budget submissions, we will ask for an adjustment.
If the fees exceed our costs, we would...
Mr. Mayor, that's rare, but if, should it actually happen, we'd probably...
It happened, it happened at the Planning Committee with...
It does happen, Mr. Mayor, it does happen in building permit fees, and in the past we have lowered building permit fees under that scenario. You know, we'd have to look at it on a multi-year basis. One year's dip, we'd probably hold pat, but, and not change fees, but if it was actually a sustained issue, we'd probably look at lowering them.
Noted. All that to say, we have an obligation that the permit fees be, fees be cost recovery.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
The, I appreciate some of the questions by Counselor Menard. Some of the permit fee caps that we mentioned, there were five cities we looked at, and two of them had caps. Are all these, the cities we looked at, Ms. Kopeck, are they in Ontario or are they in other provincial jurisdictions?
Yes, they are all in Ontario.
They're all in Ontario. And again, to not lose the focus on the thrust of the report, and I assure you to appreciate the, the work that the department did and Chair Moffett did on, on the tree bylaw, where do we situate, where are we situated in the City of Ottawa with respect to compensation? The compensation, which is unlimited with respect to the removal of trees, is it generally higher in the average or lower than other jurisdictions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to again ask Ms. Kopeck to elaborate. First of all, this is a big change for Ottawa. We in the past, other than, on privately owned trees, we have today, before the adoption of this bylaw, no compensation. So we're going from a no compensation environment to a compensation environment. And there are only a small handful of municipalities in Ontario that have got to that step yet. I, I know Toronto has been working at this longer than we have and probably has a more sophisticated program. But I, you know, we're playing catch-up, and we think this is an important step. And Ms. Kopeck can answer me more, answer you more specifically.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I would say that we're pretty on par, on the compensation side, pretty on par with the other municipalities that we looked at. Every municipality sets up their bylaw in different ways, and, and a lot of municipalities have a lower diameter limit than we have. So the ratios that, for private land that they're looking at are different depending on the size of the tree. Since ours is right now at 50 centimeters, that large-sized tree, we have that larger ratio of three-to-one, and that's very in line with what we're seeing for the larger-sized trees in other municipalities.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those answers, and I would ask my colleagues to, to support this motion by, by Counselor Moffett, seconded by myself.
Great. Thank you. Merci, Conseil. Counselor Meehan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Willis, I understand the intent of this, but in terms of the compensation, if we, if we require someone to plant three trees and, you know, to recover the cost of losing a distinctive tree, that's not going to really happen in the area that the trees are being removed in. Is that, that would be correct, right? They often, there wouldn't be space available.
Mr. Mayor, the intent is always that we try to get trees located on, within the same property as we can. We have, in other instances, worked with landowners where there's an opportunity elsewhere, and in some cases where they can't provide it, we take the cash compensation, we plant it on city-owned land. But it's always ideal and preferable, A, that the tree never be removed in the first place, which is our first goal, but if it has to be removed, we prefer the compensation be done on the same site.
Really, but you will never replace a tree, a distinctive tree that size. If you're putting an infill in, we know what infills are, so the space is going to be limited, so I would assume that it would have to be planted elsewhere. So we're losing the canopy in the area where we don't want to lose the canopy. So, I mean, I understand the compensation, and I agree totally with it. I applaud that. Does it not make more sense to, to continue to not have a cap, though, to kind of have a two-pronged approach to maintaining those trees as, as much as we possibly can? A developer, I guess, I don't think it really matters if we, they're going to be charged an additional fee if, like, if we keep the cap unlimited. Do you see what I'm saying?
Mr. Mayor, as we've tried to explain, we have two different fee regimes. One is the administrative processing fee, and one is the compensation. Well, this is a much more aggressive compensation scheme than we've had in the past, and as we said, we can continue to look at that as we proceed. We don't have compensation requirements today. If you adopt this, we will. That's a big change. There's more tension, unfortunately, being given to the issue of processing versus the issue of compensation. And if counsel's intention is that we send a very strong message on, on tree replacement and tree retention, compensation is where the focus should be, Mr. Mayor. That's staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Willis.
Okay. Let's get these other commentary before we...
Any other comments?
No, Counselor Moffett?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Willis. Thank you, Ms. Kopeck, for your work on this and the entire report. Obviously, the focus here today should be the entire report, not this tiny minutia that is this one little motion. The focus that, around this table, and all the concerns of certainly my urban counterparts and my colleague to my left, was that the concern on tree removal and the loss of that in the long run, it's the compensation that really drives that. The compensation aspect in the report, that's what's really going to be the difference between losing trees and not losing trees. That's when it comes to the volume of trees that could be applied for. It's, it's focused will be on the compensation. The permit structure itself is completely unrelated to that, in that the municipal act states how cost recovery through permits works. Whether someone applies for five trees, six trees, seven trees, the city has determined that the cost recovery hits that $2,500. If, as the case that Mr. Cloutier was, was alluding to, there's a need to go and revise that, then we revise that in the future, and we, we increase the cost of the permit. But ultimately, the goal of the city is to not make money from permits. In fact, the municipal act forbids making money from permits. So we don't want to go down the road where all of a sudden we're using the permit process as a, as a means to increase revenue. This motion merely, you know, from staff merely addresses that. We put the, the cap on the individual owner where they to seek a permit for more than five trees. It's merely applying the exact same, the exact same cap on a larger, a larger group of trees at a higher price. But ultimately, it's the same philosophy applied to both, so it just creates fairness across the board, all within the framework of the municipal act. Thanks.
Okay. So we have a motion by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Cloutier. On the motion, carried. Yays and nays have been called.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Lulov?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Counselor Daruz?
Yes.
Counselor Suds?
Yes.
Counselor Gower?
Yes.
Counselor Dudas?
Yes.
Counselor King?
No.
Counselor Shirelli? Counselor Meehan?
No.
Counselor Leeper?
No.
Counselor Kavanaugh?
No.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
No.
Counselor Deans? Conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Counselor Menard?
No.
Counselor McKenney?
No.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Egley?
Yes.
Conseil Blay?
Oui.
Counselor Earl Shantiri?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Fifteen yays, seven nays.
So this is now before us, the committee recommendation as amended. Carried. Item number six, Planning Committee Report Number 18, Rapport numéro 18 du Comité de l'Urbanisme, zoning bylaw amendment 1375 Clyde Avenue, modification au règlement de zonage 1-3-7-5 Avenue Clyde. Okay? We're going to hold that. Come back. Next is zoning bylaw amendment 966, 968, and 974 Fisher Avenue, modification de règlement de zonage 966, 968, et 974 Avenue Fisher. We do have one technical amendment. Counselor Brockington, I believe, seconded by Counselor Harder. Is there a long discussion? Should we come back to this? Okay, so if you want to introduce your amendment by Counselor Brockington, seconded by Counselor Harder, please.
Thank you, your worship, just from staff. It's very brief. Whereas, report ACS 2019-PIE-PS-0128 recommends approval and adoption of zoning bylaw amendment 966, 968, 974 Fisher Avenue, whereas staff have identified a minor change to the proposed zoning bylaw schedule. Therefore, be it resolved that counsel approve that the zoning bylaw schedule document three be amended by removing the reference to elevation above sea level. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the Planning Act subsection 3417, no further notice is given.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the sea level in River Ward? No? On the emotion? Carried. On the report as amended? Carried. Next is item number eight, zoning bylaw amendment 2175 Carling Avenue, modification de règlement de zonage de 1-7-5 Avenue Carling. Does anyone wish to hold this? On the report? Item number nine, Feedmill Creek Stormwater Management Criteria Study, Stream Rehabilitation Class Environmental Assessment, and Area-Specific Background Study for Feedmill Creek Instream Measures, Etude de gestion des eaux pluviales de riz au Feedmill. We have a Gower-Harter motion. Does anyone wish to speak to this, or should we hold it? We all set? So Counselor Harder, would you like to, or I'm sorry, Counselor Gower, if you'd like to introduce, I believe this is a technical amendment?
It is, and this has been circulated previously, so I'll just read the therefore's. Therefore, be it resolved that the Feedmill Creek Instream Measures Development Charges bylaw 2000 be modified in clause 8 for C to delete the provision related to Canada West, in subsection 8.3 in Schedule A to reference the lands within Canada West, and to clarify that two payments of $200,000 and $356,000 each, plus applicable HST, are to be made. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the Development Charges Act subsection 12.3, no further notice be given.
Okay. On the motion as presented by Counselor Gower, seconded by Counselor Harder? Carried. On the report as amended? Carried. Next is Planning Committee Report Number 19, Rapport numéro 19 du Comité de l'Urbanisme, numéro 10, zoning bylaw amendment 1426 Scott Street, modification de règlement de zonage 1-4-2-6 Rue Scott. So Counselor Leeper has a motion, seconded by Counselor Harder. We'll introduce this, and we'll see if there's discussion whether we hold it or move on.
Thank you, Chair. Planning Committee refused the application, so there is a replacement motion, I guess, whereas the recommendation to approve the extension of the temporary zoning for a parking lot was lost at Planning Committee meeting of January 23rd. And whereas the Planning Act process provides for the formal refusal of an item, together with the reasons for refusal, therefore be it resolved that counsel approve that, one, the application for an amendment to zoning bylaw 2008-250 for 1426 Scott Street to permit the continuance of a non-conforming parking lot for the period of two years be refused. Two, the reasons for the refusal of the zoning amendment are, A, the site is in proximity to the LRT line, and therefore a transit supportive use rather than a surface parking lot is appropriate for this location. B, the Scott Street secondary plan encourages the redevelopment of parking lots. And C, while a short-term presence of a short, of a surface parking lot was acceptable in the past as a mediated solution, this continuing presence of a non-conforming surface parking lot is not consistent with the vision for the community.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? This is moved by Counselor Leeper, seconded by Counselor Harder. Carried on the amendment?
Thanks to colleagues, and I just wanted to make quick note that the motion previous, I just wanted to note that Counselor Gower won another one today.
Sorry?
Counselor Gower won the one previous.
Okay, good. So on the zoning bylaw amendment for 1426 Scott Street as amended? Carried. Item number 11, zoning bylaw amendment 116 York Street, modification de règlement de zonage sans saiz rue York. There's, I have two motions here, I think, Counselor Fleury, before we carry it.
That's for the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry, on what, do you have one on York Street?
No.
Okay, so we'll come back to that then. And then item number 12 is zoning bylaw amendment and site plan control 19, and 1929 134 Robinson, modification de règlement de zonage et réglementation de plan imbibitation 19-29 et 134 Avenue Robinson. So I think we have a number of motions, we might just come back to that as well, because there's at least three motions that I see, and the same with item 13, which is zoning bylaw amendment, site plan control. So we'll come back to those. Then, city clerk, greffier municipal, item 14, summary of oral and written public submissions for items subject to the Planning Act explanation requirements at the City Council meeting of December 11th, 2019, résumé des organisations orales écrites au public sur les questions à sujeter aux exigents d'exploitation aux termes de la loi sur le management de territoires à la réunion de conseil le 11 décembre 2019. I have an amendment by Counselor Earl Shantiri. I believe this is a technical correction, seconded by Counselor Moffett. Counselor Earl Shantiri, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think you explained properly with your introductory, but I'll just go to, therefore be it resolved that counsel replace document one with the attached revised document one, summary of oral and written submission for 1966 Roger Stevens Drive. And as all my colleagues receive copy of the submission as well. So this is a technical amendment being prepared by staff, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so on the technical amendment by Counselor Earl Shantiri, seconded by Counselor Moffett? Carried. Okay. On the report as amended? Carried. Bulk Consent Agenda, ordre de jour d'approbation en bloc, Built Heritage Subcommittee Report, I'm sorry, I won't read them all, but does anyone wish to have anything removed from the bulk consent agenda? Nothing. On the bulk consent agenda as presented? Carried. All right, so we'll go back to the ones we held. So it is 1375 Clyde Avenue, modification de règlement de zonage 1-3-7-5 Avenue Clyde. There's a motion before us, and Counselor Harder is going to speak. You have the floor?
Yes, please.
Sorry?
Yes, please. That's why I held it. I think that, you know, yesterday we saw some newer, well, not new, but we saw the latest elevations of this Diamond self-storage building. And I thought that it was worthy to ask a few questions of our staff about this, as, you know, questions as to why did staff support this? Why did, you know, and then we know the Planning Committee supported it. So, Mr. Willis, are you answering the questions on this, or, or are you?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. James will be answering the questions.
Okay. So has the Diamond self-storage use...
Sorry, on a point of order, Counselor, by Counselor Egley?
Maybe it's not a point of order, but if it was important to point out that if these elevations came in yesterday as the ward council, they were not shared with me.
We all, we all got it. That's how I saw it.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant submitted the revised elevations. We immediately asked the Clerk's Department to circulate it to all members of council, and that email, I believe, went out this morning.
Went out this morning. Okay, thank you. I haven't checked my emails this morning for that, but thank you for that clarification.
Do you have them here? If you have them here, put them up.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, Counselor Harder, please.
Thank you. So has the, has the Diamond self-storage use been permitted on other arterial main sites or in other land use designations that share the general characteristics of the arterial main AM, such as town centers, mixed-use centers... main AM, such as town centers, mixed-use centers, or perceived gateways?
Mr. Mayor, with respect to that question, yes, there are actually three diamond storages, self-storages in arterial main streets. Two on Carling, one at 1554. We might see it as we, it's a very predominant site as we go down the Queen's Way there, by the Kirkwood exit, you'll see it just on the north side of the, of the Queen's Way on Carling there. There's also one out close to where Carling Avenue and Richmond Road cross at 2583 Carling. And there's a third one out in the east end at 4338 Innis Road. There's a couple of other ones, of course, on mixed, in mixed-use centers. One's on Coventry Road, close to where the Ball Diamond is, and another on Bank Street at 2420. And of course, there are a couple in town centers, one at 1,000 McGary Terrace, and one at 110 Didsbury Road. So there are other examples of situations or on lands with designations such as arterial main street, where you like to see intensification such as proposed, as well as in mixed-use centers and town centers.
So of the ones that you just mentioned, which ones could you, one of the arguments was this is the gateway to Marivale Road. Is there any other one that you, that could be perceived as a gateway?
As I mentioned, Mr. Mayor, particularly the one on Carling Avenue out by the Queen's Way, it's a very predominant site. As you, as you drive along, you come along that portion of Carling Avenue heading west, it's, the design of the building is predominant site, it's right across from the, from those office buildings, so it can be considered sort of a predominant gateway location. Some, similar to the one on this corner, on Marivale and, sorry, on Clyde and Baseline, where the two roads intersect there, is a predominant site as well.
I would think the new one at, near Lincoln Fields, I think it's now, Lincoln Heights, Lincoln Fields, is, being at the, could be considered a gateway to the Parkway, perhaps?
The one out there, it certainly has similar characteristics. It's where those two roads cross, and the Parkway is just to the north there as well. So it is, again, in a predominant location, sort of where the crossing of the number of intersections, major roads, and it has a predominant site location there as well, yes. And it's, it's my opinion, from a planning perspective, it's very similar to what you would find at Clyde and Baseline with the commercial uses that are along that portion of the road.
So when staff made their decision, was there any, anything different about this site that would have, being on an arterial main, that would have caused you to treat it differently than the, all the other diamonds that you mentioned?
Mr. Mayor, with respect to the policies that you would find within the official plan for arterial main streets, this is a very similar site. The city has, as I mentioned, for example, there's two on Carling and the one on Innis that's on a main street. The characteristics of this site are very similar, and from a planning perspective, you look at them for being the same. What you want with the development, of course, is intensification, and on the ground floor you want animation, and that's what you'll get out of this proposal, and you get a volume that's mid-rise above this, that is very consistent with what you expect to have for arterial main streets in relation to the policies. So this site is no different, from a planning perspective, than the other ones where you find these self-storage places on main streets.
So when staff took the position they did, did you determine self-storage use met the policies of arterial main street and the purpose of arterial main street zoning?
Mr. Mayor, yes, when you take a look at the use that's proposed, as I mentioned, on the ground floor is where you want the animation, you want the activity. That's what is being proposed here. There's commercial, retail on the ground floor, and above it, they have a volume of a mid-rise characteristics, exactly what you want on main streets. So the proposed building, as it did with the other examples that I had mentioned, fits in with the policies within the city's official plan regarding main street development.
And also with the policies of the official plan, like you just said.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Vice Chair, that's referring to the policies of the official plan for arterial main streets.
So where you have these other ones located, are any of them on corridors in areas targeted for intensification? I would think, for example, the one on West Carling in the Lincoln, is it Lincoln Fields or Lincoln Heights now? Fields now? I mean, because I, you know, I go back to when it was the other one. So Lincoln Fields area as an example.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, all the ones I mentioned, arterial main streets, the mixed-use centers, the town centers, these are all located in areas where you expect to have intensification that's identified within the city's official plan. So the one that's proposed for Clyde and the Baseline area, it fits in exactly with all those other examples that I mentioned.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. James. So, you know, normally, this is not something that I do ask, sometimes other people ask, but I think it's important today, if you've listened to what our staff said, why they voted, why they, why they made a recommendation, and then we voted at Planning Committee the way that we did, on very factual information. So Mr. Mark, given the fact that staff have, have supported this application, and Planning Committee has supported it, how, how difficult do you think does it make the, make it for you, as an example, to defend a refusal of this arterial main street site at the local planning approval tribunal? And what do you think, if you can figure it out, cost, not associated with perhaps costs that the applicant would try to get from us for their costs, but what do you think our cost realistically would be on this particular file? So those two things.
Mr. Chair, where an applicant has either staff on the same side as them, or council on the same side as them, the applicant has a very strong record of success at the local planning appeal tribunal. The hearing could still be conducted by legal services, even though the planning staff position would not be in support, so, but we would have to retain an outside planner. I expect it would be a one-day hearing, and I would put the estimated cost between $20,000 and $30,000.
Okay, thank you very much. I thought it was important that we have that information in front of us, as to why the report for this application was recommended, and why the Planning Committee voted as it did. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Egli.
I'm gonna defer to councillor El Shantiri as a question, and I'll sort of do wrap up.
Okay, councillor El Shantiri.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. My question to Mr. Mark again. Mr. Mark, I know in your experience with the, as the legal service in the city, what's the odd when, when our staff, you know, approved the, the file, the application, when committee also vote for the, for the application, you know, especially some of us who's on a planning committee, what's the chance for you or for our staff to win that at ALPAD?
Mr. Chair, as I said in response to councillor Harder's question, it is very difficult to be successful if staff, planning staff, are on the same side as the applicant, or also in the case where council has adopted a, an amendment against the recommendation of staff. In either case, it's very difficult to be successful.
And my other question is, having those other locations, and I know my colleague asked those question, will that be considered at the ALPAD as a part of our policy? Because we already have some of those location at the gateway, if you want to call some of those location gateway.
Mr. Chair, to the best of my recollection, none of those other applications were denied by the city, so none of them have gone to the entire municipal, to local planning appeal tribunal. I would anticipate that whatever legal counsel is acting for diamond, will bring up those other examples at a hearing.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mark.
Thank you very much, councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I mean, I've sat on Planning Committee for five years now, and when I review zoning bylaw amendment applications, I'm making a decision based on the planning merits of the file each and every time. So Mr. Mark, the likelihood of success at ALPAD, is this a criteria that the Planning Committee or council should be considering when it makes its deliberations?
Mr. Chair, I would agree that the, the significant factors that need to be borne in mind are, in a planning application, are whether it's consistent with the provincial policy statement, it conforms to the official plan, and whether it represents good planning. The chance of success at ALPAD is not, is not as important as the three things I identified, I would still accept as a relevant criteria.
Okay, well, I believe that every decision we make could be appealed, and could end up costing the city money, that people have the right to appeal decisions, and we have to defend decisions of council. So I can understand the question from councillor Harder, and I appreciate the information from Mr. Mark. However, at the end of the day, we are asked to make decisions on planning merits, period. And I think the local councillor at committee has provided a strong argument why this recommendation should be refused, and it's based on planning merits. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Menard.
Thanks very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just, I wanted to ask about community benefits. Has the developer offered any community develop, benefits in this case?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant owner was not required to, for example, provide monies for section 37 benefit, for example, because they are not increasing the density or the height on the subject site through this development proposal.
Have they, but I understand, but have they offered anything else for community benefits?
We have been working through the landscape plan and ensuring that the public realm surrounding this site is, is, benefits the Marivale corridor and improves upon it. Beyond that, and I would say no.
Okay, and I understand from residents in this area that there's a real need for residential, residential, affordable units here. Can you just speak to that fact in this area? Is there, is there a need for more residential in this area around this street? I understand that there's a big need for affordable in particular.
Mr. Mayor, of course, within the city, there is always a need for more affordable units. The city's official plan, and the zoning bylaw as well, actually has areas designated for that. You can have them on arterial main streets as well. There's other development opportunities, even if this was to go ahead for redevelopment of this site or other sites in close proximity, to provide those affordable housing units. It's, it's looked on more as a broader aspect because of the zoning and the policies that are put in place for it. So generally, of course, more affordable housing units would be beneficial, and there is opportunity in a broader scale, even if this site went ahead with a self-storage to provide those on other properties.
Okay, thanks for this. I'm not going to be supporting the, the motion today in front of us. Thanks.
Councillor Egli, would you like to let councillor Meehan speak before you, or do you want to wrap up at the end? Would you like to give-
Yes, councillor Meehan could go first, if that makes sense.
Councillor Meehan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a quick question. What is, what is the proposed base of the diamond storage project? What are they proposing in there for the retail? Is it a restaurant?
Mr. Mayor, the, the subject site has a few different buildings proposed. One of them's a diamond self-storage, which includes ground floor ancillary retail, as well as accessory uses such as mailbox, mailboxes, and document storage, et cetera. There is also a restaurant on site. It's a standalone building that's fronts onto Baseline Road.
But in terms of the diamond storage facility itself, do, do we ever discuss how, when we put a facility like that up, would we allow it, that there's any chance that the proponent or the person who's going to build it would incorporate affordable housing, say, on the upper levels of it, on the back of it? You know, because it is a prime piece of real estate that we're talking about there. And I've got no problem with diamond storage, but it just seems that we're losing an opportunity there, that's what I'm suggesting. Do we ever approach the, the developer and say, or the proponent and say, can you, would you ever consider this?
Mr. Mayor, lots of times through the pre-consultation process, when an applicant comes in, we often talk about what the proposal is, and, you know, expand upon the other uses that are allowed within the zoning bylaw that they could consider on that, through that, through public consultation. But the end of the day, we only, we always have to deal with what their specific application is. But in a nutshell, yes, we often talk about other opportunities on the site, or through redevelopment and tearing down some other buildings sometimes, but yes, it is mentioned.
But in this case, it wasn't, there was no interest in that?
Madam, or sorry, Mr. Mayor, in this case, no, it was, their end application was for ground floor commercial, retail. As Ms. Dickinson also said, there's a restaurant on the ground floor for animation, but it was for storage above, in the building that's above the ground floor.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Meehan, anything else? Councillor Egli, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to recognize that there are community members here from Fisher Heights, and I thank them for taking the time being here today. It's not often I ask you to, to go against a staff recommendation. I have a lot of respect for our staff, but in this particular case, it just doesn't work. It just, it doesn't sit well with me, it doesn't sit well with my community. And to councillor Brockington's point, we, we're here to make decisions. If, if the, if the criteria we're supposed to use to make these decisions is whether or not it's going to end up at ALPAD, then why do we even vote on, on recommendations from staff? We could save ourselves a lot of time. But we do have to make decisions, and we can say no to this application, and we should say no to this application. It's, I find it ironic, on the same day we're going to be talking about whether we have a housing emergency crisis, whatever term you want to use, that we're debating whether or not to take land that is already zoned for people to live, and turn it into a condo for clutter. That's what we're doing here. And people want to live there, the community want people to live there. It's the tip of the Marivale Triangle, which is one of the largest undeveloped pieces of land in that end of town. And we're saying effectively sterilize the tip of that triangle, put, put a big box there. It's a pretty box, but it's a warehouse. Let's not be misled by that. It is a warehouse, and a warehouse is not allowed there. It is not zoned for warehouse. So I normally like to come with you, to you with some sort of a compromise, make it a little shorter, add a few parking spots, something like that to make it, you can't do that here. It's an either-or. Either we decide that we want to fundamentally change the zoning for this area and the character of that piece of land, and put a warehouse in there, or we say no. And I am urging you today to say no. I'm urging you to say that Marivale Road is not a lost cause, that we can fix Marivale Road, we can make it more livable, we can make it more walkable, we can make it a place where people can work and play and live and do all those things. And the, the diamond warehouse with retail on the bottom, which is diamond, is just an extension of the brand name, and that's all it is. It's, it's not adding anything to the community from that, from that perspective. You've heard a lot from me over the last couple of days and weeks, colleagues, in terms of meeting with you and discussing this, and I just wanted to share some of the things that, that I heard from my community, because unlike anything else that I've seen in 10 years in this office, is, we always get the emails on things, and they're usually cut and paste, and they're all the same email, and that's important by the volume, but I received more than 50 independent, unique emails from members of my community that sat down and thought about this, and what it meant to them, and why it wasn't a good idea for their community. I just want to share some of those comments with you. My reason for this, and the this is saying, don't, don't build this, is that the city of Ottawa has a long-term intention, the Baseline should become a bus transit route serving commuters and shoppers in the east-west direction. Residential intensification along Baseline would support that plan for an improved east-west corridor. Putting in a large self-storage warehouse would tend to sabotage that long-term Baseline transit plan by emphasizing movement of cars and trucks, not people. Another comment, there is so much better use that could be made of this prime property in the Marivale Triangle, to incorporate better the principles of a more compact, pedestrian-oriented, and transit-friendly place. A warehouse does not fulfill any of these. Even in the days when Gord Hunter was an APN councillor, there was hope for and talk of making Marivale less dreadful. It hasn't happened, and a warehouse will not help. I would like to state for myself and my household that we also feel that approving the rezoning and allowing diamond storage to build a warehouse is a mistake that would not only be a lost opportunity, but will also work against the hopes that we have for the area's future as a whole. We need to set the tone for the kind of community- We need to set the tone for the kind of community we really want to have and this seems like a turning point for the Maryville Triangle. So those are just a sample of some of the unique and well-thought-out arguments that people presented. So I'm urging you to vote no. It does not meet the conditions or concerns of the Maryville Secondary Plan. It does nothing to intensify residential use. It does nothing to create more jobs. It simply is not good planning. It does not meet the requirements that we have set out. It does not meet the requirements of what the community would like to see. And let me quickly point out, this is not a NIMBY situation. My community would accept development on that spot. Development that we've already said is appropriate for that spot, residential mixed use. So I urge you to vote no today. Thank you. And I call for yays and nays.
Okay, so we're dealing with item number one, I believe councillor Eggly, yays and nays on item one, which is approve an amendment zoning bylaw for 1375 Clyde Avenue. The clerk tells me that, that we're going to vote yays and nays on that. Is that your understanding, Mr. Eggly?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Eggly?
No.
Okay. So we've, we've been asked for yays and nays on just item number one, and I'll just read it for the benefit of the members of the public. Approve an amendment to zoning bylaw 2008-250 for 1375 Clyde Avenue to permit a self-storage building and restaurant as detailed in document two. So madam clerk.
Councillor Moffett?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Daruz?
Yes.
Councillor Seds?
No.
Councillor Gower?
No.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Shirelli, councillor Mihen?
No.
Councillor Leeper?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington?
No.
Councillor Deans, conseil Cloutier?
No.
Councillor Menard?
No.
Councillor McKennie?
No.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Eggly?
No.
Conseil Blay?
No.
Councillor Alshantiiri?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Five yeas, seventeen nays.
Okay, so we have an amendment by, sorry, if we could ask members of the public to refrain, thank you. Councillor Eggly has a motion to replace item one, moved by himself, signed by councillor Gower. Councillor Eggly, if you'd like to introduce this. And my understanding is that you would support item two and three on the main report for the notice and directing staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so if you want to introduce your motion, please do so.
So this, this is a requirement I'm advised by, by Mr. Mark, their solicitor. So I'll, it's on the screen, but I'll read through it quickly. Whereas 1375 Clyde Avenue is located on the last large developable, developable process within the Fisher Heights community and whereas it is important that the development on the site takes place in conformity with the Maryville Road Secondary Plan and whereas a warehouse limited to self-storage does not conform to nor implement the vision of the Maryville Road Secondary Plan and whereas a restaurant is already a permitted use in the AM-10 subzone and thus will continue to be permitted if the requested rezoning for 1375 Clyde Avenue is refused, therefore be it resolved, the recommendations two and three be renumbered as three and four respectively. Be it further resolved, the recommendation one be deleted and replaced with the following. Approve that the requested amendment to zoning bylaw 2008-250 for 1375 Clyde Avenue to permit a self-storage building and restaurant be refused. Two, approve that the reasons for refusal are the following. A, the site is a gateway to the Fisher Heights community and the proposed self-storage use is not consistent with the site's role as a gateway. B, the majority of the site is subject to the Maryville Road Secondary Plan and the proposed self-storage use is not in conformity with the second, with the secondary plan in that, one, the rezoning does not promote a stronger movement to a mixed use that includes a residential use. Two, the rezoning does not encourage the provision of additional housing opportunities. Three, the rezoning for a warehouse limited to self-storage use does not promote a use that is pedestrian-oriented and fosters community and human interaction and is therefore contrary to the vision of the Maryville Secondary Official Plan. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak to this amendment? Yays and nays have been called on councillor Eggly's motion, signed by councillor Gower.
Councillor Moffett?
No.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Daruz?
No.
Councillor Seds?
No.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli, councillor Mihen?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Deans, councillor Cloutier?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor McKennie?
Yes.
Councillor Harder? Councillor Eggly?
Yes.
Councillor Blay?
Yes.
Councillor Alshantiiri?
No.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, eight nays.
So now on to the main report as amended. Carried? All right, it's carried. The next item held was by councillor Brockington, zoning bylaw amendment 116 York Street. Modification de règlement de zonage sans size rue York. The council refused an amendment to zoning bylaw 2008-250 for 116 York Street to permit a 17-story hotel as detailed in document two. Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship, and again, good afternoon, everyone. I didn't speak at committee, we were under some tight timelines that day with Transit Commission. I want to provide a few comments now. I mean, I do not support staff's position or recommendation on this item and I will be voting against the staff recommendation. I do believe a hotel is an appropriate use at the specific location at 116 York Street. Read the staff report many times, visited the area, and again, I do believe that this is an appropriate use. As per staff's report, the current use of this site is a surface parking lot, we're approximately three blocks away from the LRT Rideau Station where we're promoting public transit and here we're defending and wanting to protect a parking lot. On the immediate east side of this property is a five-story office tower or office building with ground floor retail. On the immediate west side is a two-story nightclub and on the immediate south side is the high-rise Andaz Hotel at Dalhousie and York. We're not, certainly not impeding on any residential units in the immediate area. Some of the stronger arguments with respect to heritage and the angular plane from York Street, although exist, are certainly not strong enough that I would accept staff's recommendation to vote against the application. The Byward Market, as we know, is a major tourist destination and not all tourists can afford to stay at the Shadow or Weston. This proposal is sound, it's needed, it's reasonable and it does not look or feel out of place. And when you hear from Ottawa Tourism and the need for more hotel space as we continue to expand our tourist base, hotels needed specifically in the Byward Market. So I support the application. I do not support the staff recommendation to reject that application and I would urge members to think about this, that a hotel in the Byward Market is an appropriate use. If you look at other heritage districts like the French Quarter, New Orleans, Ebor City and Tampa where my family live, there are hotels in their historic districts because that's where the tourists go and tourists need places to stay. So we can have a surface parking lot three blocks from our LRT station or we can actually have a hotel that our tourists need to stay in and I will not be supporting the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Conseil Fleury, si vous plaît.
Le conseil... I just wanted to reiterate some of the facts that were put forward by the city. First of all, I appreciate the, the planning committee for having looked at the plans that have been submitted for the HCD. Now, in the past, I've said that in our area is there, there's a lot of problems between designated zones and our four areas as well, especially in the market. There's a lot of issues in terms of the interaction of buildings in the heritage protected zone and those that are outside that zone. Now, the block we're currently talking about is situated between George Avenue, Cumberland, York and Dalhousie. There's a whole host of zoning on that parcel of land, including a hotel, an existing hotel, but you have to remember, remember where the hotel came from. It's a bit of an anomaly in the plan. Now, this hotel was a transformation of an existing building, which was already an anomaly in itself. It was the former Ontario Insurance Building, if you remember rightly. So we can't use that case, which has been specifically identified as an anomaly in the plan. Don't use that as an example. We're not opposed to development in the lower town, but we're not in favor of surface parking lots either. We want to move issues forward like we've done at the Cathedral, for example, but we won't just be pushed to improve any old thing. We want to maintain the characteristics of the, of the area and this is what the city report proposes. So I would urge you to support the city's report, which tries to protect the local community and I hope that the applicant will come back to us with something that properly reflects the heritage plan that's in place for the Byward Market.
Merci, conseil Fleury. Esca désolé.
Thank you, councillor Fleury. Any other comments or questions on this motion?
The committee recommendation before us on that. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you there, councillor.
Can you tell me what would you prefer to see there on that site? If you don't want a hotel, what, what's the preferred, preferred development?
Mr. Mayor, in response to councillor, Brockington's comments, councillor Mean's questions, staff don't have a problem with a hotel. It's not the issue of the land use that is the basis for staff's recommendation for, for refusal. Staff recommended a refusal because the built form is completely out of context with the area and does not respond to any of the guidelines that we already have in place. So we are recommending council's refusal for reasons of built form, not land use.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else wish to speak to this? No? So we have a committee recommendation before us, the council refused an amendment to zoning bylaw 2008-250 for 116 York to permit a 17-story hotel as detailed in document two. Carried? Dissent by councillor Brockington. Anyone else? And Luloff? Okay. Next item, this one is a little bit confusing because there's two items and three motions, I believe. So we have item 12, zoning bylaw amendment and site plan control, 1929 and 134 Robinson Avenue. Modification règlement de zonage et du plan d'implantation, excusez-moi, 1929 et 134 Avenue Robinson. And we have two motions, one from councillor Fleury and Harder, we'll get him to introduce that, and then a second one from councillors Fleury and Harder. And then at the next item, which is item 13, we have another amendment. So we'll deal with item 12 first. So councillor Fleury, if you want to introduce each motion at a time and explain it.
Mr. Mayor, the motions that I have in front of us relate to, are three of them and they relate to item agenda number 19. So I just want to make sure that I'm reading the, the right ones. So the first one is to amend the recommended, amend the recommended zoning details. I just want to make sure with the clerk that that's the appropriate motion. So whereas report ACS 2020 PI PS 0001, zoning bylaw amendment and site plan control recommends approval for zoning bylaw amendments and site plan control for three separate six-story apartment buildings at each of the following municipal addresses, A 17 1923 Robinson, B 27 29 31 Robinson and C 130, 134, 138 Robinson. Whereas the plans recommended for approval include a rooftop amenity area and, on each building and whereas Sandy Hill has experienced negative impacts with rooftop amenity areas associated with noise complaints and privacy concerns, it is desirable to prohibit this use in this circumstances. Therefore be it resolved that a zoning provision be added to the details of recommended zoning in document two for six similar, in the effect to the following, outdoor rooftop amenity areas are prohibited. And be it further resolved that pursuant to Planning Act, section 3417, no for, notice be given. Is that carried, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. On the motion?
Carried.
Carried.
The second motion...
Next one, go ahead.
Sorry about that. The second motion refers to site plan approval to staff. So again, this is for agenda item number 19. Whereas report ACS 2020 PI PS 0001, zoning bylaw amendment and site plan control recommends site plan approval for three proposed six-story buildings at each of the following municipal addresses, A 17 1923, B 27 29 31, C 130, 134, 138 Robinson. Whereas delegated authority for staff to grant site plan approval for the said application has not been removed by the word councillor at this time. Whereas the plans recommend for, recommended for approval include an outdoor rooftop amenity on each of the building, whereas Sandy Hill has experienced negative impacts with outdoor amenities. Whereas council has now approved amended zoning provisions which require the developer to remove the outdoor rooftop amenity area and whereas on Tuesday, January 28, 2020, the developer had proposed a revision to the plans and report to remove the outdoor amenity areas and to make adjustments to engineering plans, site lighting, fencing, indoor amenity areas, which require further review by staff. Therefore be it resolved that the site plan application for ABC, as previously noted, be referred back to staff for approval in accordance with the recitals in this motion.
Okay, so that's moved by councillor Fleury, seconded by councillor Harder. Does anyone have any questions on the amendment? Councillor Gower, no. On the motion, carried? So we have now before us item 12 as amended. Does anyone wish to speak to this item? Councillor Menard?
Thanks very much, thanks very much, Mayor. I just have a, a question for, for staff around this because this was initially approved at, at planning committee and the question I have is, it's on transit-oriented development, right? It's in a transit area, it's a pretty quick walk to transit. And it looks like staff are going to be recommending through the official plan, some type of inclusionary zoning policy associated with, with transit-oriented development. Looks like that's coming. And this is a prime site to have that sort of inclusionary zoning, affordable housing looked at. And so I guess the question to staff is, will you consider looking at the inclusionary zoning policies associated with what the province has allowed us to do with, with transit-oriented development and potentially bring that forward before we wait another year and so to approve the official plan so that we don't lose some areas like this where we're obviously building, going to be approving applications that don't have affordable housing in them. I didn't see affordable housing as part of this one and so it's an important, I think, question if we can bring it forward before we approve the official plan.
Mr. Mayor, as a result of bill 108, the city is only allowed to bring inclusionary zoning rules in areas designated in the official plan as major transit station areas. So we are working with our colleagues at Community and Social Services to bring forward an IPD report to planning committee to indicate the process and all the steps we're required to do. And as a result of the concern expressed among many members of council, Ms. Gray and I are asking our staff to give council some options about how quickly we do that.
How quickly we could do that?
Yeah, we're, we're, Mr. Mayor, we're going, Ms. Gray and I are asking our staff to give us options about the speed at which we do it with the official plan. Is there another way of doing it? We are asking our staff and that will be part of the report.
Okay, that's very helpful. I just don't want to lose areas like this where there's a potential for, you know, 20% affordable housing to be included. So thanks very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, before councillor Fleury wraps up, does anyone else wish to speak on this? So we're now before us is item 12 as amended by those two amendments and councillor Fleury to wrap up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did bring at committee a, a motion that didn't pass. I just want to reaffirm two principles, one which is we, we've gone through the TOD, least TOD exercise, which as part of that council-approved exercise, we kept parking provisions for very specific reasons as it relates to, to the challenges to get to the LRT from, from that parcel of land and also because of, because of the lack of amenities in the area, including being a food desert. So I will be voting against both... So I will be voting against both this report and the following one at 36. What's important for me is that we recently passed the LEED TOD, and I don't understand why the provisions within it wouldn't be upkept at council, which would change completely the development goals. So again, I just wanted to set, Mr. Mayor, the context as to why I won't be supporting both reports.
Okay, so we have before us committee recommendation number 12, zoning bylaw amendment and site plan control, 1929134 Robinson Avenue. Modification, regulation de zonage, 1929 et 134 Rue Avenue Robinson as amended. Carried? Dissent by councillor Fleur and Brockington. Anyone else? Okay. The next item, item 13, zoning bylaw amendment and site plan control, 36 Robinson Avenue. We have another motion by councillor Fleur and seconded by councillor Harder. Councillor Fleur, if you'd like to introduce it, s'il vous plaît.
So it reads amend the recommended site plan approval. Whereas report ACS 2020 PI PS 002, zoning bylaw amendment and site plan control for 36 Robinson Avenue recommends approval for zoning bylaw amendments and site plan control to permit a nine-story apartment building. And whereas the ward councillor raised concerns about the building and site plan design as it relates to residents' safety. Whereas the site plan and landscape plan have been revised to show site yard, gates, and exterior lighting to ensure the safety and security of building, of the building residents. Therefore, be it resolved that document four, the list of approved site plans and studies for the site plan control application be amended to add updated plans and studies as follow. One site plan drawing, number SP1, prepared by Hoban Architecture, dated January 10, 2019, project number 1834, revision 15, dated 20, 2020, January 28. And the second point, tree conservation report and landscaping plan, project number 19MIS 1936, dated March 2019, prepared by James Lennox and Associates Inc., revision five, dated January 28, 2020.
Okay, so that's a motion by councillor Fleur and Harder. Anyone wish to speak to this? On the motion?
Carried.
Carried. On the main recommendation from committee as amended? Carried. Dissent by councillor Fleur. Okay. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority. Suite a donné des articles ratifiés par les comités en vertu de pouvoir déléguer, the council received the list of items approved by its committees under delegated authority attached as document one. Carried? Motion to adopt reports. Motion pour adoption de rapport. Councillor Gower, appuyé par councillor Lulov, please.
That Bill Heritage Subcommittee reports nine and 10, Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Waste Management, report eight, Planning Committee reports 18 and 19, and the reports from the city clerk entitled Status Update, Council Enquiries and Motions for the Period Ending January 24, 2020, and Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of December 11, 2019, be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion? Carried? Okay. Motions of which notice have been previously given. Don avis a été donné entièrement. Councillor, conseil Fleur, appuyé par conseil, conseil Blair.
Councillor Fleur and Blair. Whereas Ottawa Francophone community is deeply concerned with the fate of daily newspaper Le Droit. And whereas Le Droit is Ontario only French-language daily newspaper. And whereas since it was founded in 1913, Le Droit has defended the rights of Franco-Ontarians and provided our community with valuable media coverage. Whereas the media presence and media coverage of Francophone Ontario form a pillar of support to, for democracy in our city and our community. And whereas the newsroom and head office of Le Droit have been located in Ottawa for the past 106 years. And whereas we consider it essential that a newsroom remain in the national capital and that the successful proposal protect the jobs of journalists assigned to covering the city of Ottawa in the province of Ontario, as well as those of correspondence based in eastern Ontario. Therefore, be it resolved that the city council acknowledge the importance of the daily newspaper Le Droit for Ottawa. Be it further resolved that Ottawa City Council encourages the daily Le Droit to collaborate with the community and the business community to find strategies and solutions so that Le Droit maintains its presence in Ottawa and its coverage of the Francophone community in Ontario. Maybe I can explain the context, Mr. Mayor. Le Droit is part of a historic conglomerate that was started by the Démarais, who belonged recently to the media group with the family, the Cochant family. And they went bankrupt recently. There were six newspapers part of this group. And they established this cooperative model. So we're kind of caught in this wave throughout the country. And we can see amongst those six groups that Le Droit is the only one covering news outside of Quebec. So what's important for us is the local news, not necessarily who owns Le Droit. I, I agree with the co-op idea. But what's important is to have a newsroom and employments here, jobs here in Ottawa to encourage the Francophone minority here in Ottawa and in Ontario. So I just want to reaffirm this, how important it is. And I congratulate Le Droit from what I can see, two advertisements in the past two days for better cooperation with La Cité Collégiale, which is very important for the Francophonie, and also for getting monies to cover the news of Francophones in Queen's Park. So that's something new for the community. But the fact remains that the jobs should remain in Ontario. It's difficult to cover the reality of minorities when we end up in the majority. Councillor Blair.
Merci Monsieur la maire et Monsieur, merci.
Thank you, councillor Fleur, for your leadership. Le Droit is a very important daily for the Francophones in Ottawa and our leads. It is so important that we maintain, maintain it and we continue to cooperate with people in Ontario to have news of our community. This way, the Franco-Ontarian, Franco-Ontarians can read in, in French and have a connection with other Franco-Ontarians in Ottawa and elsewhere in Ontario. So I hope that everyone will support this motion. Any other comments? I'd like to add, thank you councillor Fleur for this motion, supported by councillor Blair. I read in Le Droit also today, the agreement between the cité and Le Droit. So it's very good for students in journalism and congratulations for this initiative. Of course, we know that Le Droit will be moving to Gatineau because they got money from the government of the Quebec, government of Quebec to assist the media located in the province of Quebec. It's a little sad to lose this institution in the Bywood market, but I understand why. And at the same time, I think it is a positive outcome. We saw the journalists covering Queen's Park in Toronto and now the agreement with La Cité Collégiale. So thank you for your initiative. Carried? Carried.
Councillor King. Councillor McKenney, if you'd like to introduce your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just-
Can you just make sure everyone has the same because there's been, I think, a change today? So if you just want to put it up on the screen-
No, it, yeah, there was a change. Councillor Lulov added, made an amendment. So I just want to make sure everybody has that. Whereas the federal government mandates that the city of Ottawa collect information on homeless veterans on a point-in-time survey, and at last count, 65 homeless veterans were counted in the city of Ottawa. So thank you for that, councillor, councillor Lulov. The resolution today in front of us is to ask the city of Ottawa to officially declare affordable housing, an affordable housing and homelessness emergency in the city. And, you know, it's, I was, I was so, very proud to be appointed as, as the liaison for, for council at the beginning of this term. As, as someone who has experienced homelessness as a younger person and also lived in what is now Ottawa community housing for many years, you can imagine my pride when I landed on the OCH board first and then became the liaison for the city of Ottawa. And people have asked me over, over the last six weeks, you know, why an emergency? What's the difference? And I think councillor Hubley, you know, when he spoke on the Bellet's Talk Day, said words matter. And words do matter. We've been calling this a crisis for, for 15 years and, and nothing has changed. And, and people ask me all the time, can you guarantee me something will change with this? And I can't. There's absolutely no special power that's being invoked by calling it emergency. But I do believe that we just can't keep doing the same thing. We need something. We need strong language that will tell people in our community who need to hear from us today that we're listening, that, that they're, that they're not invisible to us. And that when we think about 716 children in this city alone who are living in motels today and are eating just from microwaves, if that's not an emergency, I, I just don't know what is. And 1,100 people who slept in our shelter last night, and we know that at least 500 of those have been there for over two years, often much longer. And we know that there is a disproportionate and profoundly, homelessness is disproportionately and profoundly experienced by indigenous people in this city. I know our numbers say it's about 25%, but it's higher. It's about 30, 35%. You can ask anyone who works in, in a shelter. And, and Mr. Mayor, your, your words to elder commander today and having her here today, I want to thank you for those. I think that they were very powerful when you said, you know, I hope that her words will help guide council's deliberations and inspire us to make decisions that will benefit our communities for centuries to come. Because it is what we owe indigenous people in this city and across this country. And today is also Bellet's Talk Day. And we know that mental health and housing go hand in hand. It is estimated that as many as half of the people experiencing homelessness also live with mental illness. So we're leaving people who are not well in shelters. We're leaving them outside. We know that people in this, this city often sleep outside. Some 92 people slept outside last night. I met one this morning coming into council chambers. His name is Howard. He's indigenous. And he slept in Confederation Park last night in that cold, and he'll probably sleep there again tonight. So the, the call today for an emergency is so that we will have said as a city to everyone in our shelters, to people sleeping outside, to the children in motels and their families, to women who flee abuse and get sent back with their kids into often very dangerous and, and sometimes deadly circumstances, that, that we're going to try harder. Like we do in any emergency, we're not going to stop filling sandbags and we're not going to stop doing what we need to do until the emergency is over. So for that, Mr. Mayor, I would like council and you to join me in declaring housing and homelessness an emergency in the city of Ottawa.
Great, thank you. Councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much. I want to thank my colleague for this, for this motion. It's certainly something that we're seeing very, very prominently in, especially in this cold weather. I particularly want to raise the concern about homeless women as liaison for women and gender equity. It, it doesn't seem like it's out there, but it's, it's very, very much out there. When we have random women calling my office, asking if I know where they could stay, and I don't have an answer for them, this is pretty, pretty bad. And it makes me feel very emotional that we've gotten to this point. And I know that the councillor is not asking for, for shelters because we want permanent affordable housing. But it's so bad that we don't have a place to put homeless women. They're staying in shelters with homeless men. And it's, it's, it's very bad. And so I wanted to point that out because that, that is part of the problem. It's a domino effect. When you don't have housing for, for people, they end up staying in shelters for months. And that is a huge problem. And I know our shelters are absolutely at capacity. You only have to go down, you only have to talk to the mission, you only have to look at what's happening there. So I want to offer my support and suggest that affordable housing is the ultimate goal, but we definitely have a crisis. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councillor King, please.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Ottawa prides itself on being a caring and compassionate city where people want to live, work, and play. Safe, adequate, and affordable homes are fundamental to this goal. Unfortunately, I agree with my colleague, councillor McKenney, our special liaison for housing and homelessness, that our city is moving in the wrong direction, further away from this vision. The situation concerning homelessness has moved beyond an urgent crisis, so I also believe we should call it for what it is, an emergency that is putting people's lives at risk. The city's own review of its housing plan showed that instead of decreasing, shelter use increased by 6.5%. Shelters in Ottawa are full and are often operating at overcapacity. If the original goal of the city's 10-year housing and homelessness plan was to reduce shelter use by 40%, then by now, we should only have 5,150 people using our shelter system annually, working our way to 3,862 people by 2023. Instead, the total annual number is now almost 8,000 residents. Last night, more than 500 people slept in shelters who are chronically homeless, meaning that they have been sleeping in shelters for more than 18 months. Those who are sleeping on our streets were doing so in minus 20-degree conditions last night. Ending this chronic homelessness is a realistic goal and could be achieved in five years, but only if we obtain the immediate support of senior levels of government to fill the massive funding shortfall required to end chronic homelessness and to build and upgrade our community housing stock to address the growing waitlist for affordable housing, which increased by nearly 15% in the last year alone. The waitlist for community housing has grown to 12,000 households, and there are currently 600 families cramped into motel rooms throughout this city who will not likely get housing for at least a year. These statistics are indicative of a growing intolerable situation in our city, which, quite frankly, has been precipitated by federal and provincial funding levels which are not sufficient to provide adequate affordable housing to our residents or to eliminate chronic homelessness in our city. Colleagues, as we know, our entire funding requirements for housing and, and homelessness cannot come from the city's property tax base, though we have done what we can allocating 15 million in the last two budgets from the city treasury towards this effort. Councillor McKenney's motion acknowledges the fact that the city alone cannot manage this situation without proper support and calls upon our senior levels of government to immediately provide emergency funding so that we can build new homes and provide residents more allowance supports. This motion, if successful, will express the collective will of our city to seek serious funding solutions to address and solve the serious housing problems that we have in Ottawa. Over 7,000 residents have expressed their desire for more funding solutions by signing a petition. This motion, if passed, can act, in a sense, as our council's petition, providing both the mayor and councillor McKenney with a strong advocacy tool that calls upon our federal partner, especially during their current budget consultations, to take the corrective policy and funding actions required to ensure that we can follow through- policy and funding actions required to ensure that we can follow through with our goals to preserve and increase the affordable housing supply, increase access to housing affordability, prevent the occurrence of homelessness, and eliminate by 100% chronic homelessness by 2024, with a special emphasis on Indigenous homelessness, and ensure people are supported to achieve housing stability and long-term housing retention. Due to the immediate need of the 1,000 people last night who were in a shelter and the 100 people tonight who will be sleeping on our streets, I urge everyone around this council table to support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you councillor McKenney for your personal and passionate work that you have put into your new role, this brand-new role that we have at the city. I really like in your motion the detail that you've gone into that highlights, you know, we're doing our part, we need others to step up with more money. We're putting a lot of money into it. It matters. We're coming up with a homelessness report that'll go to Community and Protective Services at the end of March, and we look forward to that. I'm sure we'll be behind it. You know, I heard you say that the word "emergency" legally doesn't get you anything more. And I know that too, because I've gone over this with our legal to say, what do we really get by using that word? Because I'll tell you what you don't get. You don't get everyone on council to support the motion with the word "emergency" in it, even though I think, and I don't want to speak for everybody, this matters very much to all of us. And there's not one of us who doesn't take it seriously and want to do more, want to do better, and want to do it faster. So I have, I don't know whether you would be interested, I like the things that you've changed, I like the addition of the veterans, I think that that's important, and like I said, you've outlined it very well. But for me, I have an amending motion that just deals with the first resolution of the McKenney-King motion to be amended to read as follows. Is it on, can we have it on the screen? It's really short. So it's the first resolution of the McKenney-King motion. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Ottawa officially recognize that affordable housing and homelessness is an ongoing, critical, and urgent crisis that requires all levels of governments to commit on an expedited basis to adequate and permanent funding to implement initiatives outlined in the 10-year housing and homelessness plan. I find it strange that they're laughing about something so serious and when I think that, as I said, the people around this table are in sync with wanting more, to do more, to do faster. So what this does, I think, and I haven't shopped it around, so it's, I think, other than what you're seeing there, I don't know that anybody else has actually seen it. What it does is get you, I think, 100% support of a council of one of the largest cities in Canada. And I think that gives you way more power than having the emergency word. Gives you power to go to all municipalities through AMo and councillor Brockington, through FCM and councillor Tierney, to all the municipalities, and encourage them to support it. That's going to give you real power to have all of this council voting on your motion eliminating the word "emergency." I strongly recommend that we collaborate on this because everything that councillor King and councillor McKenney has said, they're right. And I think that this will be the path that gets us there and will give you the clout that you need at the province and other provinces, at the federal government, and certainly with our colleagues across Canada. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. So on the motion now, debate on the motion, councillor Fleury. Yeah, but councillor Fleury had his button pushed.
I want to speak on...
I know, but councillor Fleury's ahead of you. No, I realize that, but councillor Fleury had pushed his button, so... Yeah, so councillor Fleury, do you want to speak to the amendment? No, okay. Councillor Leaper on the amendment? Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't think we can stress enough that we are in an emergency right now. When we have a burning house, when we have a patient having a medical issue, we send our emergency services. When we have homes that have been destroyed by tornadoes, the branch of the city that takes a look at it is our emergency management branch. There is, I don't think, any stronger a word that we can use than "emergency." We're in an emergency. A couple of weeks ago, the MCC shut down the only housing that was available to a group of residents affected by a fire, which was to camp in tents in the forest. If that's not an emergency, what is? Next door to me and right across Hintonburg, right across Westboro, neighbors are being dismayed, is probably not strong a word enough, at the fact that residents, longtime residents on our street have got oftentimes two months to move out of affordable housing so that developers can put up $1.2 million semi-detached homes. There are six guys next to me. They're on Ontario Works. They can afford $600 a month for rent. We've asked them to call housing services. They're on waitlists for housing. They'll be years potentially to find that housing. If it's not available in my neighborhood, I'm going to lose those neighbors. They're going to lose access to the services like the Parkdale Food Centre, proximity to transit, their friends, their networks, Somerset West Community Health Centre. And it's not something that's going to happen in two years from now. They've got until the end of March to find that housing, and they're not going to. That's an emergency. I want us as a city to treat that the same way we would treat it if somebody's house was on fire, if somebody is in medical distress. Lives are at stake, and when lives are at stake, we call that an emergency. It's not enough for us to go to the provincial and the federal governments and say, hey, something bad's happening here in Ottawa, we've got a little bit of crisis on our hands. We need to go to the feds and the province and tell them, we've got an emergency, we need you to act now. We are going to call with this motion 911 on housing. I urge you to maintain the language that councillor McKenney has originally proposed in her motion. It is not enough for us to call this a crisis. We have an emergency, lives are at stake. I won't be supporting the amendment, and I hope my colleagues don't either. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Menard, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm surprised we're debating this at all. We shouldn't be going into the debate on whether it's an emergency or not. It clearly is, and this doesn't actually help us in any way get to that consensus that we need around the table. It doesn't. Because you start debating whether it's an emergency, it's not an appropriate thing to be putting on the table right now. I'm surprised it came to the table. I heard it might be coming, I'm just surprised it's here now. And so now we have to debate it. Now we have to talk about why it's an emergency over and over and over again. FCM was raised. You know, I worked at FCM. I can tell you, the staffers at FCM would like to see these types of motions come forward because across the country, there is emergencies in many cities, and it helps them in their advocacy, it helps them in their advocacy with the federal government. And that's what we're aiming towards. The cuts that we saw in the federal government in the 80s and the 90s has led to largely where we're at right now, and we've gotten ourselves into a crisis, yes, and an emergency. And I also want to highlight Edmonton, Chair of the Big City Mayor's Caucus, the Mayor Edmonton. Edmonton, the way they treat homelessness is an emergency. They mirror local disaster response plans, and they've reduced their homelessness by 43% in less than nine years. They're projecting to eliminate homelessness by 2022 because they mirror a leadership style that rallies the community, works with them to shape the direction of their efforts, and coordinates the response. That's what happens in an emergency. Unlike most disasters, mass homelessness in Canada today was created by other policy decisions, and we have the chance to help start reverse that today by calling this what it is, which is an emergency. So, you know, I'm surprised, I'd ask councillor Harder to withdraw this motion. I don't think it's helpful for anybody. You should be withdrawing it, councillor, in my view. I'll be voting against it certainly, and that we can get back to the order of us coming together to tackle this problem together with the other orders of government federally and provincially.
Councillor Gower, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a bad feeling that this council is going to end up divided over an extremely important issue, and that troubles me a lot. I wish I had more confidence that we could all sing from the same songbook here. I do think words matter. I think in terms of what councillor McKenney's original motion does versus what councillor Harder's amendment does, does not fundamentally change anything in the motion. Calling this an emergency does not invoke any special powers for the mayor or for staff or anyone else. But I do think words matter, and I think "emergency" is a very appropriate word for what we're facing here. I have personal connections to organizations and individuals who serve people who are without proper housing. I think of the homeless shelters in our community, you can continue to see an increase in the number of people trying to access emergency housing. You look at the hotels and the families that are in chronic homelessness, and what effect that must have to kids and children living in a precarious temporary hotel as housing, the anxiety and the stress and how that must affect their ability to learn and to be individuals to live as children. And so I think emergency is entirely appropriate, and I would urge my council colleagues to get on the same page. I respect what councillor Harder's trying to do. I hope that she'll withdraw it or that my colleagues will not support that amendment. I think the amendment is originally proposed, pardon me, the motion as originally proposed by councillor McKenney is the right wording to use in this case. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sudd.
Thank you. As we all know, yesterday, council received a briefing on the updated 10-year housing and homelessness plan that will be to the province this week for approval. It's intended that this is a midpoint or a review or refresh of the plan. However, in our case in Ottawa, I know that it was a very big undertaking. I know there were extensive consultations and that staff put countless hours into this, essentially rewriting the plan. As we saw, of those of you who were able to read the brief that came out yesterday, it's an ambitious plan. It's seeing us create up to 8,500 affordable housing units and financial subsidies out to the end of the plan, and also ensuring that 20% of those are devoted to supportive and accessible housing. It also calls on the city to preserve its existing stock of Ottawa community housing units. It's a plan that's ambitious, and it's a plan that we can't fund alone. The refreshed plan, as I said, will go to the province later this week for their review and their approval. Further, it will come to CPSC, March 27th, where we will all have the opportunity to review and debate its contents. Personally, I'm proud of the work that's gone into this plan and the position that the city is taking, setting ambitious targets, targets that see the unsheltered individuals in our city fully eliminated, among other things. The city is also currently working on a long-range financial plan and modeling what the city will need to commit over the coming years and what we need other levels of government to also commit to achieve this plan. And I believe these data points, these figures, will inform our asks to the other levels of government, and they're critical to our credibility and our success in achieving this plan. I think we can all agree that the city needs this plan. We need to be ambitious. We need to address the urgent need for housing that impacts too many individuals and families in our city. Everyone needs a safe place to live. I believe we also need to work together as a team on this when making these significant asks of other levels of government. I will be supporting the amending motion as I believe it represents a better consensus on these issues and is in line with the community-driven 10-year housing and homelessness plan as has been prepared. I agree, if the city declares a homelessness, excuse me, emergency, it's not going to give us another tool, a legal tool, to combat the problem. And I think this is our opportunity to come together as a council in consensus, to support each other, and to support our efforts to be able to speak with one voice, to be able to lobby other levels of government as we need to. And I encourage my colleagues to support it as well.
Thank you, councillor Sudd. Councillor Brockington on the amendment.
Thank you, your worship. To the city manager or Ms. Gray, is Ottawa in an emergency?
Mr. Mayor, the facts and the details, and I think you've started to talk about those today, and they've been detailed and articulated in both the motions, and they speak to the needs in this community, the dire needs of many individuals in this community, and the current capacity to meet those needs. I think the decision and the discussion today really is of council in terms of what direction they want to take in responding to those needs. I think the staff have put forward and will put forward a plan and an approach and a requirement of what we think we need to address, but really the decision about, is it an emergency or how do you move forward with that rests with council.
Yeah, we've heard references to other cities, including Edmonton, declaring emergencies and looking to see that our leadership has the same type of ambition to address this issue. I certainly challenge you to grab your sleeping bag for a week and join the gentleman in Confederation Park who slept there last night. And after a week, I'll ask you, are we in an emergency? Maybe our perspective will change after experiencing what many of our homeless experience. I think the declaration of emergency reflects reality. And we send a number of motions and directives to AMo and FCM, and they're all important. Things that we send to them are important. But when those things that have an emergency declaration attached to them, those, in my opinion, are the priority items that we want other municipalities in Ontario to be aware of, and we want other municipalities who have the same challenges with homelessness to make similar declarations. Because when you have multiple cities in this province and multiple cities across this country making those declarations, the other levels of government will pay more attention, I would think, because of that. So I'm not sure what the net benefit is by the Harder motion. We've heard basically everyone speak in favor of the sentiments and merits of councillor McKenney's motion. We do have a major crisis. There is an emergency. We want to work with the other levels of government to address this. So let's call it what it is, an emergency. And by doing so, I think you get that much more attention from similar municipalities to make the same declaration, which snowballs into greater support from the provincial and federal governments, who we must partner with. Without them, we will not be able to do this. Right? That is the reality that we have. So similar to what the movers said, making this declaration today doesn't get us anything more, but I think it provides the spotlight it needs with other cities, the province, and the federal government. So in that regard, I cannot support the amendment because I'm not sure what the net benefit, how it is making it better. And frankly, we are in an emergency that reflects reality. Let's call it what it is. Thank you.
Councillor Elshantiari, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure how much more to say than what my colleague to my right said, councillor Sudd, the chair of the CPS Committee. But Mr. Dumont, you know, being a councillor who dealt with a state of emergency during the flood, I thought all along my understanding, when we have, when we declare state of emergency or emergency, that means there's a time when you act in an emergency, you follow the rule, but there's sometimes we don't have to go get an environmental... follow the rule, but there's sometimes, we don't have to go get an environmental assessment, we have to fix something on an emergency. I thought the word "emergency" or "state of emergency," it gives you more power to deal with an item, it has a beginning, and hopefully will have an end. Am I missing understanding what the meaning of the emergency?
Mr. Mayor, I'll let my colleague, Mr. White, talk to you about the distinction, but you're correct. Under a declaration of emergency by the mayor or head of council, what it does for us as staff when we're working to recuperate in an emergency situation in the flood, it allows us to do certain things, bypass certain bylaws, make requests for certain types of equipment. So it really gives us extra tools to mitigate a situation which is imminent and ongoing. But maybe Mr. White can give you more details as to the definition.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think it's important at this point just to distinguish between an emergency as defined under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, which is what I would call, I think the general manager would call it, a statutory emergency, the kinds of things that you spoke to, natural disasters, those kinds of things. I don't understand that that is what council is discussing here. The authority under that statute resides with the head of council, does not reside with council. And as has been noted, with respect to what I understand is under consideration by council, the motions before it, they do not provide any additional authority in terms of their, council or staff's legal ability to address the issue.
My other question, I'm not sure who's going to answer this. Maybe Mr. Wallace will help me with this one. Has any other city declared a housing emergency? Who should we ask? I'm not sure.
Donna.
Maybe Donna, maybe somebody? Does anybody know?
Housing.
Housing.
Mr. Mayor, no.
Okay. Well, that's the dilemma, folks. I mean, I think you heard it, colleague, we all want to support our colleague. She did a very diligent work on her motion, councillor McKenney, and I really, in my heart, I want to support that. But I can't with the wording in place. I hope we can find a compromise where we can all unanimously rise with the support, whether you use the word "critical" or "urgent." I believe it still deserves this, especially after we heard from the mover, it will not add any value added to this. I was at Roma Conference, and the minister announced again, more housing in Ontario, and more affordable housing. Obviously, they're working on a detail of this, but I'm not sure having an emergency is going to add any value to what the provincial government are working on at this time. So I will not be supporting the motion the way it is, but I will be supporting the amendment from councillor Harder.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Meehan on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really distressed about why we are debating the word "emergency" today. We're all, as we said, on the same page, but it distresses me to hear some of my colleagues here saying, well, it isn't an emergency. Yes, it is an emergency, and not just for the people who are downtown living in shelters. This is citywide. I'll just tell you one little thing. Just before Christmas, I was trying to find housing in the south end of the city for a young mother with three children, who because of domestic issues, was living in a motel in downtown, in the downtown area. A motel that's jammed pack with asbestos issues, and she is sick and getting sicker, and three children, who she's trying to keep in school in the south end. This, to me, is an emergency. I could not find accommodation for this young mother. I found it was an emergency. I couldn't go back to her. I went back to her and I said, I can't find anything in our community. The fact that we are going to be maybe the first city to declare an emergency, what is the issue with that? Is this because it's an embarrassment to the city, where the nation's capital, and we have a housing emergency, or we have a housing crisis that's so serious that we want to declare it an emergency to give it the priority that this issue actually requires? What is the problem with the emergency? If it prioritizes our problem and kickstarts the federal government and the provincial government to give us more funds, what is wrong with that? What is wrong with that? Let's be the first. Let's declare the emergency and get the attention that this deserves, because we're doing everything that the staff has been doing for our homeless initiative. I applaud them. Why can't we have both? Why can't we have an emergency and continue the work that we're doing and give it the priority that this issue deserves? I really, I want to be able to go back to this mother and maybe call her tonight and say, we've declared an emergency. I have a little bit of hope to give you, that maybe, that in the next year, I will have a unit for you in the south end, that you can tuck your children into bed at night with your own roof over your head. That's all we're asking for here. What is the problem with the word "emergency" if we can speed up getting people into homes? Get the federal government and the provincial government to sit up and pay attention. Let's be the first in this area. So I cannot support the amendment. I will support councillor McKenney's motion as written. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Eggly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got to say, I'm having issues with this discussion. It almost kind of makes me a little bit sad, frankly, that we're going back and forth, because I know from talking to everybody around this table that everybody cares deeply. Every councillor, whether it's rural, urban, suburban, the mayor, the mayor's office, staff, everybody around this table feels very strongly about this. And, you know, as the motion or the amendment was introduced, I did a little bit of Googling, you know, and you look up "emergency," and the synonym is "crisis." And you look up "crisis," and the synonym is "emergency." It's the same thing. They mean the same thing. And based on what we've heard from Mr. White, neither word is going to give more or less legal oomph to what we're doing. It's not going to give anybody more powers, less powers. I think Ms. Gray was quite correct. The decision is ours. And so I don't think the decision that we have today is really whether or not we have an emergency or we have a crisis. I think the decision is, do we want to do something to fix a problem? I think we can all agree on the word "problem." And, you know, I toyed in my head just amending the amendment and just taking out any reference to crisis, emergency, or anything else, and simply saying that the CDB Ottawa officially recognizes that affordable housing and homelessness requires all levels of government to commit. And then we just take the elephant in the room off the table. I don't think that either party will accept that. I don't think councillor McKenney would accept that, and I don't think councillor Harder would accept that either. So again, I go back to, you know, this discussion is a difficult one to have, but we're moving away from what we should be talking about, what we should be focusing on, is that we have a problem, and we need to fix the problem. And I'm not blaming anybody when I say this. I'm not, this is not about, this councillor said that, or that councillor said this. It's, again, about, as I said, everyone around this table, staff and elected, agree there's a problem. That's why we put $15 million into it, and I commend the mayor for that in the budget. That was a huge step. But we do need help. We do need help from the other levels of government. We have to signal somehow to the other levels of government that we need help. Being nice, having meetings, hasn't necessarily worked, despite our best efforts, at both the staff and a political level. And again, I thank everybody who's tried to do it. So we have to do something different. This is something that other cities have looked at, played with, done variations of. So I think we have to move forward today, and I would like to think that we would move forward together, recognizing, as I say, "the problem," and that the problem has to be fixed. I don't care what word, you know, by training I'm a lawyer, words are very important to us. They mean something. They carry power in them. Change one word in an agreement, it can change the whole agreement. However, changing a word in this particular motion does nothing. Doesn't make it better, doesn't make it worse. But what does resonate with me a little bit is that the public had notice of the motion with the word "emergency" in it. That's what they understood that we would be voting on today. This is a new change, just come in right now, and that's not what the public saw, that's not what the public understood. And again, I don't see there's a difference between the words, but "emergency" was what was placed in front of the public. The people who signed the petition sent us the emails, made phone calls to our offices, had discussions with us. So that's what they had notice of. That's what we were clear about communicating. So I think in that sense, if anything tips the scale, and again, as I said, I would vote for either, but we have to make a choice and vote for one or the other, or we're not going to move forward on solving this problem, and it's got to be solved. So in that regard, I will support the original motion, because that's what the public saw, and they didn't see this. And again, it's a nuance to go back and say, well, crisis is no different, we voted on the same thing, but what they saw was emergency. And I believe everybody in this room wants to solve this problem. I believe everybody in this room was on the same page in that regard, so let's just move forward.
Councillor Luloff, please.
I do believe that it is an emergency. People are sleeping on the street. It's a crisis. It's abhorrent. It's a completely unacceptable situation, and it's really uncouving of G7 capital. I know that there are councils around this table that would never support a motion that uses the word "emergency." That's a reality. I've tried to convince them otherwise. There's no moving them. No one denies the sentiment and the issues that our homeless are facing, but I think having a unanimous motion passed is stronger than one that passes on division. I hate arguing over words. Yes, as councillor Hubley stated earlier today, words matter, but when it comes to what this motion is trying to do, words will not make a measurable difference. The motion does not ask for a state of emergency, so nothing more is accomplished by the difference in the words we choose. I feel the same way as councillor Eggly. Let's not argue semantics. Let's not let partisanship and posturing get in the way of getting action on this file. The people that will be sleeping on the street tonight in our city deserve better than that. I support what councillor McKenney is trying to do, so let's just pass the motion in whatever form unanimously and concentrate on what we're actually going to do about this problem.
Councillor McKenney on the motion.
Tierney, thanks.
Councillor Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think we're all struggling with this, because the meat of it is the important part. I heard, I'm just concerned, and I have a question for our lawyer. In the event neither one of these motion passes, what will happen, or not happen?
Mr. Mayor, perhaps I'll begin procedurally. Nothing will happen. That will have dealt with the notice of motion from December 11th and the amendments and the motion here today. So procedurally, you will have completed that. I'll leave it to the city solicitor to comment on the legal aspects.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Just to echo the clerk's comments in that regard, there will be no direction. Council will have made no decision in that regard, and it will leave council where it would have been, quite frankly, but for the motion one way or the other.
So in most cases where we have a motion that gets defeated, it doesn't see life again for the term of council. That's a long three years. Would this fall into that same category?
Mr. Mayor, it's always impossible to predict what changing circumstances and what facts may occur in the future. Council does have its homelessness 10-year plan coming. There are a number of policy-driven matters, but with regards to this particular issue, I would suggest that it may not be able to be resurrected, as you said, under the normal or routine rules.
So first of all, before I get into my little quick wrap-up, I want to thank Catherine and Rawson for actually taking the time. Sometimes we see some things come to the table, and let's face it, we're politicians, we just do our thing. But they actually took the time, and they came office to office and met with us, and there was a lot of discussion. And I'm glad, actually, we had the whole Christmas period to work things out and get to that point. I am really struggling with this one, though, on the semantics of it. We saw Toronto, I know it's state of emergency in Toronto, a little different, but we've seen a lot of municipalities fail on that respect. My big fear, it's almost like Russian roulette, where we're saying, okay, maybe we can do this all unanimously on one, but what if on the other motion it doesn't go through? We're going to box ourselves in. I will be supporting both motions, and I really hope that one of them, we see success, because that's the greatest fear. If one of these motions doesn't pass, we are literally putting the brakes on the opportunity to help start fixing this major crisis.
I'm just wondering if, there's obviously, you know, we're going to go through this whole debate with the main motion before we get to councillor Harder's motion, whether we can reach some compromise on the floor that I would propose on the paragraph below the veterans addition that you added, that we take out the word "officially," because that has connotations for the Emergency Powers Act in that first sentence, and that we add "and homelessness crisis and emergency," acknowledging that the city does not possess. So I'm more comfortable, because I was going to speak to the whole official component of it. It allows us to deal with the words "crisis" plus "emergency," and it takes out the word "officially," because, you know, emergencies, in my view, have a finite time. St. John's went through an emergency, and then they lifted the emergency. So would that be a friendly amendment, councillor, in the spirit of compromise?
So, just so I'm clear, so we're saying no to the Harder amendment?
Yeah. Well, I can't tell her to withdraw it, but I can certainly support a motion that would say--
You could strongly suggest.
--crisis and take out "officially."
So then I'll ask councillor Harder, if we agree, would you withdraw your amendment?
Are you agreeing? I want to hear what you're saying first.
Okay. Okay. Then just hang on.
Let's put it this way, if she withdraws, will you accept my friendly amendment to remove "officially" and add "crisis"?
So you are saying, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Ottawa declare--
Yeah.
--an affordable housing and homelessness crisis and emergency?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So will we withdraw that, councillor Harder?
Yes.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, no, we want to speak--
You and I are--
Let me just, I'll ask councillor McKenney to wrap up, but let me just offer a couple of--
I did want to speak on the main motion.
Do you?
Why? No.
All right, well then councillor Flurry, then councillor McKenney, and then myself. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Go ahead.
He wants to speak to the main motion.
That's what I was waiting for.
Matt? All right, let's allow councillor Flurry to speak.
I'm happy to see that there is agreement, but I want to tell you this. Yes, we want to push the federal and provincial governments for more funds for housing, but we have to stop looking at the tip of the iceberg. We have to focus on the tip of the iceberg, but we have to understand that there are people in the street, people without housing, people in shelters, and you have to understand that 12,000 people are on the waiting list. When we started talking about this, I came to the council in 2010. In 2012, the province said throughout Ontario, we want to see less people in shelters. Since then, there are not less people in shelters. There are not less people waiting for affordable housing. So the question is, what will make us move forward and move on motions? It's not through a call for tenders for hundreds of units that we will be able to succeed. We have to rethink our ways of investing, and we have to work together in cooperation. I challenge us all to keep, to understand the 10-year plan. I mean, it can't just be an aspiration. It has to be an objective with numbers, with investments, and with a clear number of units. investments, and with a clear number of units. If we keep seeing hundreds of people, a hundred more people on the waiting list, and if we invest the same amount of money to build units, the result will be the same, there'll be as many people on the waiting list for affordable housing. So, thank you to my colleague for moving this motion. It really accentuates the importance of changes. We have to stop thinking about the same kind of funding, the same kind of projects. I think we have to rethink our whole procedure. We need private investment, we need to invest in nonprofit housing, and yes, the city cannot be the only one acting on this. So I urge you not to look only at the tip of the iceberg, but at the rest of it. If we continue acting in the same way, we will end up with the same results. Thank you, Counselor Cloutier.
Counselor McKenney, Counselor King, for the motion, and I, like, all around the table, I'm so happy that we're able to reach a consensus and a compromise. I was going to speak to the original motion, emphasis on two points, the importance of our provincial and federal partners, again, the city cannot do this on its own. It is a situation of, with multiple components, of mental health, of economic development, of development, of housing and affordability, number one. Number two, I want to make sure that through this motion, and it is mentioned in the motion, and I appreciate it so much, that we encourage and we emphasize and encourage staff to continue to reach out to the indigenous organizations and the leadership on this, to ensure that their voices, their experience are included, and to ensure that the emphasis on indigenous homelessness in the city's 10-year housing and homelessness plan is created through an indigenous lens and have a meaningful impact on those needs. And I simply wanted to make that point. All components of our community are important, the indigenous community being, of course, one of them. So with that, again, let me emphasize how pleased I am that hopefully we will have a unanimous vote.
Merci, Conseil. Anyone else wish to speak before Counselor McKenney wraps up? No, Counselor McKenney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to obviously thank my colleagues around the table. In the last six weeks, I met with and spoke to most of you many times, and we had good conversations. And I'm always okay, you know, if we disagree, we disagree, but I like honest conversations, and we had many, many of those. I want to thank staff for the work they've done on the Housing and Homeless Plan, Donna and her team. This is just the beginning, you know, we've got a lot of work left to do. I, you know, can't wait to get out of here, actually, because I've got phone calls to make and people I want to see, because we've now declared a housing homelessness emergency and crisis, and crisis, and crisis, yeah, in the City of Ottawa. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being friendly with that amendment. Thank you, I appreciate that, I appreciate the olive branch, really. I think that it is better if we can all walk out of here agreeing that we have work to do, and that what we're seeing in our city is not okay. And we have to come into work every single day with that lens, and every single decision we make has to have that lens. What does this mean for people who are vulnerable in our communities, who are living in poverty? Because in the end, and I'll just finish with this, there are many people in our communities who, people who use drugs, people with mental illness, but a lot of people who use drugs are still housed, a lot of people with mental illness are still housed. The common thread here is that these people are poor, and that's why they don't have housing. They just don't have the money. Because I can tell you, I'm not likely ever to become homeless, and we're probably not likely to ever become homeless, but we don't know that about our friends, and we don't know that about our kids, and we don't know that about a lot of people in our community. It is about poverty, and today, people living on that brink are frightened, and they're frightened for a reason, because people today fall into homelessness very, very easy, and you can't get out. So, thank you. I look forward to working on a poverty reduction strategy, because I think that that's the direction that we have to go as a city. But I am very pleased that we were able to come to a consensus today. I think it will mean a lot to everybody in the community who is depending on us to make change. Thank you.
Well, merci, Conseil McKenney, et merci.
Thank you, Counselor McKenney, and thank you, Counselor Harder.
Harder and McKenney have the joint responsibility of dealing with the housing file, because Counselor Harder has a responsibility from a planning perspective, Counselor Suds is Chair of Community Protective Services Committee, and Counselor McKenney is the liaison on housing and homelessness. Let me just offer a couple of comments. I think one of the things that sometimes we're not great at doing is reminding ourselves and the public that, notwithstanding the challenges that so many people in our community are facing when it comes to finding a safe, decent, warm home, is the fact that we actually have done a lot, you know, and I tried to highlight that in our State of the City address, not to boast, but to just remind people that we actually have set records in terms of the number of dollars going into affordable housing, the number of projects that are on the list this year alone, I think close to 600, the ambitious plan that was co-signed by Counselor Suds, myself, and Counselor McKenney that was released yesterday that shows our targets, but also to remind ourselves, of course, that we have to rely on the other levels of government.
It's important for us to convince the other levels of government to work with us, with municipalities, not only Ottawa, all of municipality.
Mayor's Caucus, which is the 25 largest cities in Ontario, just the other day, which is a subset of AMO that Counselor Brockington is aware of, and the number-one issue amongst every single mayor was not infrastructure, it was not the opioid crisis, it was not anything about transit, it was housing. And the same is true, Counselor Tierney, you know at the big city mayor's caucus, and Counselor Harder knows this, because we see on a daily basis the applications that are coming in for rental. There's a demand for it, and we need to increase our stock that helps bring, hopefully, the prices down. But we do have, as I mentioned, hundreds of examples of housing units that have opened and will continue to open, and it's something I'm very, very proud of. The whole issue of emergency, crisis, and so on, I think the concern was, when we use the declaration, officially declared an emergency, I see, and our city solicitor agrees with his comment to a question from Counselor Tierney, is that an emergency is traditionally viewed as being finite, it has a beginning and an end. St. John's went through an emergency because they had a record amount of snow, and it was lifted. We had an emergency in Counselor El Shantiri's ward in Britannia, as well as Cumberland, for a set period of time, brought the military in, and gave our staff that ability, as Mr. Demonte indicated, and then it was ended. So we got entangled in a couple of words. I appreciate the willingness of Counselor McKenney to accept my friendly amendment, and I thank Counselor Harder for withdrawing her motion. But to get back to the federal and provincial governments, we have a meeting this week with Minister Hussein to put forward our case that we cannot continue to do this on our own, we need their help, and we're meeting them now, because, of course, this is the time when the budgets at the provincial and federal levels are put together. I spoke with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Mr. Clark, as well as Rod Phillips, the Minister of Finance, and the premier, to talk about the importance of ensuring that housing, affordable housing, has a prominent place in their fiscal statement, because we cannot continue to see people living on the streets and in overcrowded shelters.
So it's really a very important debate for residents. Thank you for your participation. A lot of people are here now at City Hall to talk about affordable housing.
Municipal Affairs and Housing, I had the opportunity to sign the largest Canada-Ontario housing agreement worth over $1 billion. But we don't need one-off announcements, we need continuous, ongoing, sustainable, predictable, and reliable funding for housing, because we cannot put the sector through this rollercoaster ride of, you know, one minute we've got to apply for funding by March 31st, they call it March Madness around Treasury boards at the provincial and federal level, and then we gear up for another bout of applications, and there's no money. And I know this is an issue that is going to be addressed, thanks to the good work of Donna and her team, and we thank you for your work, and Shelley and others who have been very, very instrumental. I'd encourage members, just in conclusion of the public, to take a look at the summary of the Affordable Housing Refresh. It has to be sent to the province by this Friday. We will release it once it's fully translated, it's a rather large document, and we want to make sure that it's in both official languages sometime in the next couple of weeks, well before the committee meeting, which takes place, Jenna, on March 27th. So we'll get that out, but that will be on Ottawa.ca. So in conclusion, I want to thank everyone for participating, this is clearly an important issue, I think we should do yays and nays to get it on the record, hopefully of our unanimous support, and I thank all members for their courteous interventions. Merci beaucoup, and yays and nays, please.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Luloff?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley? Counselor Daruz? Counselor Suds?
Yes.
Counselor Gower?
Yes.
Counselor Dudas?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli? Counselor Meehan?
Yes.
Counselor Leeper?
Yes.
Counselor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Deans? Counselor Cloutier?
Oui.
Counselor Menard?
Yes.
Counselor McKenney?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Counselor Egli?
Yes.
Conseil Blay?
Oui.
Counselor El Shantiri?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
20 yays.
All right, so we're at the halfway point of the meeting now, and we'll go on to motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, motion requiring the suspension of the rules of procedure. Counselor Gower, are you getting all these motions just to show off to your parents?
I'm just trying to show I do some work here at council meetings, Mr. Mayor.
So you have a motion requiring suspension of the rules with respect to provincial by-elections. They were called this morning, as a matter of fact. Counselor Blay?
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to step away from the table during this discussion.
We know that it, we've verified with the city solicitor and clerk, it's not a conflict, but out of abundance of caution, Counselor Blay has stepped away from his chair. On suspension of the rules, as it's a timely matter, carried. Counselor Gower, please, seconded by Counselor Suds.
Okay, in the interest of time, and for the sake of my parents who are still here several hours later, you've all been circulated this before, the gist of it is, we're trying to align our signed bylaws with the period of time for provincial and federal election campaigns. So, therefore be it resolved, staff be directed to amend bylaw 2003-520 for the purposes of the 2019 provincial by-elections in Ottawa, Vanier, and Orleans, such that signs be permitted on public properties once the Chief Electoral Officer of Ontario issues the relevant writ, and be it further resolved that this amendment to bylaw 2003-520, respecting election signage on public property upon issuance of the relevant writ, remain in effect for any future provincial or federal by-elections, or until such time that council has an opportunity to receive and consider staff's forthcoming review of the bylaws governing election signs as part of the midterm governance review, or at the earliest policy review opportunity. And be it further resolved that staff from the office of the city clerk be directed to include the relevant bylaw title in the procedural motion to adopt bylaws.
Okay, so there are some dates that are listed in the text of the body, and now that we know the by-elections have been called, does anything have to get changed on the dates that are referenced in the motion? Because this was written before we knew the writ was dropped this morning, Mr. City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we would take it as a direction, just to ensure that we align ourselves with the writ.
Okay, agreed, on the direction, agreed. So on the motion, carried, adopté, merci. The next motion requiring suspension of the rules is by Counselor Leeper, seconded by Counselor Brockington, with respect to a house that has become unstable, on suspension, carried, and Counselor Blay has joined the table again. Counselor Leeper, introduce your motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. At 89 Richmond Road, it's the former acupuncture place next to the Ashcroft Convent. It burned, just, I think, about a year ago, so asking council for support to demolish that, I'll skip the whereases, therefore be it resolved that council approve demolition control for the existing building on the property upon application of the owner, subject to the following conditions, it's the usual conditions associated with these with respect to landscaping, et cetera. There's been some neighbor issues where the state of the current property is creating some problems. So we have already agreed as a council to approve a new redevelopment plan for that, with the support of the community and myself, so we'd just like to demolish it now, ahead of taking, getting that built.
Okay, so on the motion by Counselor Leeper, seconded by Counselor Brockington, carried. Sorry, did someone say yays and nays? No? Okay. Does anyone else have a motion requiring suspension of the rules? No? Notice of motion for consideration of subsequent meetings, avis de motion pour exécution des réunions subsistantes. Counselor Brockington, do you have a second there for your motion? On Claymore Avenue? I don't have one here. Counselor Blay?
Yes. Given that it's Counselor Blay's intention to step back from council over the next month, I think it would be wise to put Counselor Leeper as the second there, because this is going to come back in two weeks, and Counselor Blay...
He can still come to council.
Okay.
Well, it's your call, it's your motion.
Well, I'll keep it Counselor Blay. I thought he wasn't going to be here, but if he's going to be here, then I'll keep it as the term.
Yeah, you can change it two weeks.
Okay, so we'll leave it as Counselor Blay.
All right.
And introduce?
Yes, please.
Just very briefly, similar to a motion that I brought before Christmas, there's a sewer and road redesign project in my ward this summer, this one's in Carlton Heights. This is just with respect to private driveways, so again, the be resolved clause is that in respect of the renewal of Claymore Avenue, Senio Avenue, and Flay's Road, that private approaches be reinstated as they were immediately prior to the reconstruction of these streets. So that's notice of motion.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counselor Egli, with respect to Tanglewood tornado plaque.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is seconded by Counselor Menard. So essentially, what we're trying to do here is, we, there's been a tree planted in the park, which lost 45 trees during the tornado, so a tree in memorial, if you will. The community wants to install a plaque, apparently we need a motion at council to do that. Sorry? The community paid for it. They, yeah, the community paid for it, they just want to be able to put it in the ground. Apparently, we need a motion to do that, so the motion is therefore be resolved, city council approve the installation of the plaque at 72 Methears Drive, Methears Park, in memory of the trees lost due to the 2018 tornado by April 24, 2020.
Do you want to suspend the rules?
I'd be happy to suspend the rules and have it passed today.
So on suspension, carried, on the motion, carried.
Sorry, Glenn, you weren't seconding that one.
Thank you. Next notice of motion is by Counselor Menard, seconded by Counselor Meehan.
Thank you. Whereas on March 6, 2019, city council approved on the basis of available information provided by senior staff and external legal counsel, the staff recommended Stage 2 LRT proponent TNECs to construct and maintain the North-South Trillium Line, and whereas members of the public, transit users, media, and counselors have raised concerns with the integrity of the procurement and decision-making process that resulted in the staff recommendation to council, whereas staff have since confirmed that the bid put forward by TNECs did not meet the 70% minimum technical requirement, as set in the RFP process, and whereas on January 23, 2020, staff released the technical evaluation committee...
And whereas on January 23, 2020, staff released the Technical Evaluation Committee's consensus presentation for the Trillium Line extension, which revealed significant technical deficiencies in the bid put forward by the preferred proponent, TNEC. And whereas the release of this information has further eroded the public's confidence in the procurement and decision-making process, as well as in TNEC's ability to successfully deliver the Trillium extension. And whereas council has engaged the city's auditor general, who conducted an audit of specific elements of the Stage 2 LRT project, and provided council with a list of recommendations to improve the process for future P3 projects, which included enhancing public transparency. And whereas the auditor's recommendations only address a portion of the public's concerns, and despite the audit, there's still significant pressure from the public to continue the investigation into the Stage 2 LRT Trillium Line extension procurement and decision-making processes. And whereas council is accountable to the public, and therefore should explore all options to restore public trust. Therefore, be it resolved that at its meeting of March 25, 2020, city council select and approve the recruitment and engagement of an independent third party to review and report back to council by September of 2020 on the city's purchasing bylaw, being bylaw number 2017-362, as amended, and the delegation of authority bylaw, being bylaw number 2018-397, as amended, as it pertains to public-private partnerships, as well as projects of significant public interest in order to improve council's ability to exercise municipal leadership and oversight as mandated by subsection 224D and D1 of the Municipal Act 2001. And to ensure that procurement best practices are incorporated so that the process is more transparent to the public. And be it further resolved that staff provide a transparent evaluation criterion in the relative performance of a minimum of three recommended parties for the review of the procurement bylaws and delegation of authority bylaw for council's consideration and approval. And be it further resolved that staff provide council with a report by March 2020 containing the solutions proposed by TNEC in order to comply with the mandatory technical requirements outlined in the Stage 2 LRT Trillium Line Extension RFP. The report should indicate how TNEC responded to all of the deficiencies identified in their bid by the Technical Evaluation Committee and presented in the Trillium Line Extension Technical Evaluation consensus presentations on October 3 and October 23, 2018. The report should also include all of the deficiencies we have witnessed with the rollout of Stage 1 and the necessary adjustments to Stage 2 as a result.
Okay. Thank you. Any other notices of motion? No. Okay. The office of the city clerk has received the following notice of intent pursuant to subsection 29.6 of the procedure bylaw. Notice of intent from the Integrity Commissioner to submit an interim report to council pursuant to section 9 bracket 3 of the complaint protocol respecting an ongoing investigation for consideration at the 12th of February 2020 council meeting. And notice of intent from Light Rail Regulatory Monitor and Compliance Officer to submit the annual compliance report to the February 19, 2020 meeting of the Transit Commission, rising to the city council meeting of February 26, 2020. A motion to introduce bylaws, motion important presentation de règlement, councillor Gower, seconded by councillor Luloff, please.
Que les règlements énumérés à l'ordre du jour sur la rubrique motion de présentation de règlement trois lectures soit lus et adoptés. And that the bylaw entitled a bylaw of the city of Ottawa to amend bylaw number 2003-520, respecting signs, approved by motion at today's meeting, be read and passed.
On the motion, carried. Confirmation bylaw, councillor, règlement de réfécation, conseil Gower appui par le maire suppliant, Luloff.
Que les règlements suivants soient lus et adoptés. That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of January 29, 2020.
Enquiries. We have a number of written inquiries. First councillor Menard, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I have three written inquiries. The first is, I'm requesting that staff provide a detailed breakdown of the costs, both upfront and ongoing, of the new security measures recently introduced at the entrance of council chambers. Further, I'm requesting that staff provide evidence of the need for heightened security, as well as evidence that these new security measures are an effective and measured response to the demonstrable need. Finally, I'm requesting that staff provide substantive evidence regarding the effect security measures may have on public participation through peer-reviewed papers and journals published about the subject. The second inquiry is that I'm...
Hold that for a second. Just out of curiosity, Mr. Demonte, councillor Menard is asking evidence that these security measures are effective. How did it go today? Anything...
Mayor, our first council meeting, the security team, following the two committee meetings last week, had done some adjustments, and we think it went well. Three individuals today we had to intervene with. One had a knife, and it was disposed in the bin and was allowed entry. A second had a knife and returned it to his vehicle and was allowed entry. The third individual, however, had three knives, including a hunting knife, was asked to omit them, refused, and obviously was denied entry today.
You might want to include that in the inquiry from councillor Menard, because I think that's relevant. Your next inquiry, councillor Menard?
Sure, yeah. I've also heard of several people turned away because they had knitting utensils and people that won't come in here because of the new security features. So, let's include those in the report as well.
And I think maybe also, do councillors have a locked-door policy in their area as well? I think you can't just wander around a councillor's office.
No, it's correct, Mayor, and for staff protection as well.
Okay. Councillor Menard, your next inquiry, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'm requesting that staff provide a detailed breakdown of the estimated cost to the city should we terminate the contract with RTG, RTM due to the negligence of the proponent through convenience or for any other avenue of termination that is currently available to the city through the project agreement. Further, I'm requesting that staff report back on the feasibility and estimated cost of a negotiated purchase of the controlling interest in RTG, RTM through purchase of equity. Finally, I'm requesting information regarding the process to terminate the contract and bring these services in-house. The last inquiry is that by the end of February 2020, city staff provide council with a list of preferred mechanisms to look at the possibility of establishing an independent external review of the Stage 2 Trillium Line decision-making and procurement process for council's consideration, such that the independent review report would, at a minimum, identify and critically review the Stage 2 LRT procurement and decision-making processes as follows: the use of delegated authority by city staff and the foundation used to exercise that authority; the decision-making process of the Technical Evaluation Committee and Executive Steering Committee in selecting the preferred proponent for council recommendation; the process and decision-making at the council meeting that resulted in the preferred proponent being selected; and offer any options or best practices for similar infrastructure projects in the future. I expect this to come out, that the Ombudsman on Ontario is the best way to go about this, but happy to hear staff's opinion on it. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Fleury has an inquiry.
I have two inquiries, Mr. Mayor. In reference to the January 23, 2020 memo, O train light rail transit Stage 2 technical evaluations, can city staff advise how the following RFP technical requirements were resolved in the final awarded contract for Stage 2 LRT? One, bidder's failure to include signaling and training, train control system. Two, bidder's lack of plan for snow removal operations. Three, bidder's failing score for system integration management plan. Four, bidder's lack of plan for future use of Trillium Line's existing fleet of Alstom lint diesel trains. And five, bidder's lack of description on how the maintenance and rehabilitation services will be executed in a timely, diligent, safe, and professional manner. In addition, can staff explain why 70% score was initially determined as a threshold required for technical evaluation?
Okay. Your next inquiry, councillor. I think it's, your name's not on it, but I think this is for you on security?
Yes. In December 2019, the city of Ottawa's corporate security implemented new security measures at the entrance of city council chambers. These measures included new screening procedures for the public attendance, council, and committee meetings in this room. At the first two meetings in January 2020, in which these new measures were employed, public complaints arose with respect to issues of accessibility and privacy. Therefore, be it resolved, or therefore, can staff please advise council? One, under what specific delegated authority, either the delegation of authority bylaw or elsewhere, did staff develop and then implement these new measures? Two, when and through what mechanisms did city council authorize staff to implement these new security measures, procedures? And three, what public consultation or public meeting was undertaken prior to implementing these new security procedures? And was the city's accessibility advisory committee and its accessibility office formally engaged?
Okay. Thank you. Next inquiry is from councillor Brockington.
Thank you, your worship. In speaking with the clerk's office over the last few days about this inquiry, there was agreement that some context to my questions is important, so I'm just going to ask for a little patience. It's important. The Municipal Act specifically sets out the following statutory duties for all councils in Ontario, section 224. It is the role of council, part D, to ensure that administrative policies, practices, and procedures, and controllership policies, practices, and procedures are in place to implement the decisions of council. And D1, to ensure the accountability and transparency of the operations of the municipality, including the activities of the senior management of the municipality. In fulfillment of these mandatory responsibilities, city council considered and amended an original proposal for the mayor to be given the delegated authority to conduct performance reviews for the city manager and the auditor general on December 3, 2014. Being the only two positions that report directly to it and that council hires, provides goals and objectives for, performance appraises and ultimately dismisses, council unanimously carried the following two significant components to recommendation for, part four of the 2014-2018 governance review report. And I quote, "that the mayor be given delegated authority to conduct performance review meetings for the city manager and the auditor general based on written weighted evaluation forms filled out by each member of council, and report the results of the meetings to council in the manner deemed most appropriate by the mayor. And that the mayor and the deputy mayors be given delegated authority to conduct performance reviews for the city manager, and that the mayor and vice, chair and vice chair of the audit committee be given the delegated authority to conduct performance reviews for the auditor general." End quote. With the unanimous hiring by council of Steve Kinalakis at its special meeting of February 8, 2016, the above-noted provisions were inserted into the city manager's employment contract with the additional proviso that his performance shall be reviewed and assessed annually. In a similar manner, the AG has a matching provision requiring an annual review of his performance. Now, in light of this factual background, can the city clerk consult with the mayor and advise council of the following? Were these performance reviews for both the city manager and auditor general carried out in the manner established by council for the years 2016 through 2019 for Steve Kinalakis, and for the years 2015 through 19 for Ken Hughes? If so, were the results of these performance reviews disclosed accordingly to council? And if not, why were these performance reviews not undertaken in the manner and timelines as directed by city council? Thank you.
Thank you. Adjournment, councillor Gower, seconded by councillor Luloff.
My favorite, my favorite motion of the morning and afternoon, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of January 29, 2020 be adjourned.
Carried, adopté, merci. Thank you very much.